Well, we don't have everybody here on the council, but I don't think we ought to wait any longer on the Tourism Committee meeting this week.
No, I'm sorry. I thought you all told us 6:45. Johnson, Ross said it's 6:30.
6:30.
Okay. We thought it was 6:45. Sorry about that.
Do you have any other people that you're waiting for?
No, I'm sorry.
Ross is here.
Yeah, where's Ross?
He's right there. I just saw Jimmy come in the aisle.
So you're doing it.
I wonder if Jimmy knows we're in here. Wait, let's... Ross, could you see if Jimmy knows we're in here, please? I think he just came in. Okay. This is a meeting for the purpose of discussing proposals or whatever. The Tourism Council wants to present.
All set?
Yeah, all set.
First of all, we'd like to tell the council about the proposals we have out to the state of New York through the county to build a new Circle River Valley Industrial Interpretive Center in Fulton. This would be part Chamber building and part interpretive center. We've given you a copy of the proposal. We have two alternate design plans. The Chamber is going to build a new building. We envision that building as being, at the present time, across from Faze on the east side, it's a strip of land, it's a triangular piece of land between 481 and the railroad. And it's a fairly good sized piece of land, even though it's odd shaped. And we are working towards building a building there. What we would like to do is build a building and a tourism attraction. And that tourism attraction would be an industrial interpretive center. Just very briefly, as you know, we've got some major industries in the area of the community and all along the Circle River Valley. Industries that are consumer product oriented industries that unfortunately cannot offer or are not planning to offer plant tours. We see this industrial interpretive center as someplace that people can stop and visit, maybe walk around, see the history of the industrial development of the Circle River Valley. And also perhaps, if we can go that far, maybe have some interactive videos so that people can stand and push a button. Push button A to have a video tour of Miller Brewing Company, push button B to have a video tour of the Nestle company. We've come across kind of a dormant grant that's been sitting there in the state for a couple of years for $400,000. It's for an interpretive center, a tourism interpretive center for Oswego County. And it was designed for Oswego for one reason or another, primarily the times. In fact, Oswego Chamber had already built a building, or already bought an existing building. And the county really didn't want to take on a separate tourism center. And we see this as an opportunity for Fulton. We've had a design competition with a couple of local architects. And we've got some pretty, you know, impressive plans. I don't really want to distribute them or release them because in all fairness to the architects, we haven't selected one yet. But we're using these for the purpose of the grant. And we're telling you about this merely as a point of information, but also the county legislature has come through with a resolution supporting this, as well as operations of Oswego County. And we thought it might be appropriate that, if you're so inclined, for the council to support it with a resolution. We're not looking for any money. We think that if we can get the grant along with some local fundraising and normal Chamber operations, then we can support the facility. The only thing we might be looking for down the road from government is some part-time help in the summertime through the county program. Or perhaps through the city program at some time to help staff the facility. But we're pretty excited about it. And the industrial interpretive center really kind of hinges on the grant. If we can't get it for one reason or another, it is going through channels and all that. We'll probably build something that'll be much less than the idea that we have. Our problem with tourism in the city of Fulton, as you gentlemen know, has always been there's really not a major attraction here for people to stop and see and spend some time or whatever. This facility, as we envision it, would provide that opportunity and also be an educational informational facility for local industry. So that's that part of it. The real reason we're here tonight is to present...
Let me ask you, are you going on to another subject?
Yep.
Is there enough parking there?
Yes.
Because I think it's a great idea and a great location.
There are 25 parking spaces that can be constructed on the site. And then there's a seat of parking across the street in the Faze parking lot. So if you had some large events, you know, if you decided to hold a speaker in there or have some kind of a large event, you've got a lot of parking across the street.
And what is the square footage of the... What would the square footage be of the center?
According to the total building, it would be approximately 4,000 square feet. Approximately three quarters of that, or close to 40, 70 percent, would be a industrial interpretive center. If we can build the industrial interpretive center, there'd be more room for parking and room for future expansion.
Does that 70... does that 70 percent for industry include conference rooms when I'm in that 70 percent?
Conference rooms and facilities, lobby, maybe a little gift shop where people can go in, buy Miller t-shirts and Nestle...
Oh, yeah. Maybe some chocolate tours of the plants.
Well, ideally, we'd like to have tours of the plant down the road, but we've been told that until, I guess the economy is better, that's really not a place in the future. Neither the Nestle plant as it stands or the Miller plant is conducive to tours, we've been told.
If this is available, why wouldn't we be able to get it?
Well, because it is a legislative item. The governor has frozen legislative items. You know, hopefully, it's... but it's been out there. It's been out there for a couple of years. You know, we hope that, you know, it's with a good plan. And, you know, this is something that we're linking to the academy of the area, tourism, tourism development.
Great opportunity.
It's not current funds, something that's been set aside, it's been sitting there for almost over two years.
Is industry interested in contributing any help?
They've indicated some interest. I think, again, we have to come back with more concrete plans. And until we know whether we can do this or not...
Is there a strong contest for the grant or is it pretty much open?
The grant is very restricted for this. The grant says for a tourism interpretive center in or near Oswego.
We're near Oswego.
We're near.
I love it. I think it's great. I would even contribute some money.
Any other way?
Before you get to the other subject, which I think you're going to ask, get into this business with Historical Society. Is this what you're going to get into?
I'm going to give you a budget report on 1992, and they proposed 1993 budget for tourism.
For tourism?
Right.
Well, I think you should know this, that I just learned today from how we single, how true it is. I don't know, but he claims to have seen the law. The Enabling Act that authorized collecting the bed tax specifies that one half of that has to go to the lake for development of the lake resources. Says he's seen the law, so I don't know. All right.
It's county law, drawn along the lines of other county laws. I'm quite familiar with it.
Well, wouldn't this have happened after that passed by the legislature? The county can authorize us to levy a bed tax?
They're the ones levying.
You're the ones levying.
Yeah, they're the ones levying.
Levying the bed tax.
Right.
That was by authorization of legislation, wasn't it?
No, no, they just said...
I don't think any local municipalities have the right to levy a tax.
I think they have.
Anyway, hi. Anyway, he said that he would come up with a copy of the laws if he does, I'll send you that. Okay.
We've got two. First is the budget for basically 1992. Recap where we've been this year. As far as what we presented earlier this year in getting the designation of the Greater Fulton Tourism Council as the recipient, the advisory body for the local bed tax monies. It's very simple. There's two columns, one's the budgeted amounts and the second is the We budgeted a total of $25,000, which included the matching funds program. The matching funds program is really just now getting off the ground and is pushed into 1993. Again, those are anticipated receipts. We understand, I think through the... First off, we did receive $20,000, I think, in bed tax money, or will receive $20,000 in bed tax monies this year, I believe. We checked it. We anticipated some monies from the matching funds program. On the actual side, the council, by council resolution, transferred $2,000 over to Riverfest overtime, which left us with a balance of $18,000. Riverfest, as budgeted, received $6,000. Memorial Day Salute was budgeted at 15, received 2,500 by action of the council. The Historical Society was budgeted for 2,000. They, I understand, sent bills in for 1873. Marina Science, which is again something that's a challenge, and the CDA contributed $1,000. We talked about doing a matching funds program for Canadian shopping, and it's just getting underway now. And what we're asking for is the county, the council, to appropriate $750 to get that program started. That has not been appropriated yet. Chamber of Commerce administrative support has not been appropriated for this year. Other items were roughly, it was roughly kind of a catch-all, what it came down to was $500. The Historical Society asks for bed tax monies to rewrite their brochure, which promotes the Historical Society, promotes visits to the Historical Society. The Tourism Council at its meeting last month recommended that that money be appropriated for them. In our reckoning, as far as we know, unless there's some other disbursements from the account, that leaves a balance of $627,000 out of a total of approximately $18,000. So we're asking for council action on three items. The matching funds program, which is an advertising program that we want to start. Syracuse newspapers sends a circular up along the Canadian border, going both ways from the Bowls Town Bridge. And what it is, is to attract people to shop, Canadian shoppers to the Syracuse area. And what we're going to do is run an ad that's supported by local merchants, invite them to come through a nice small community, make their face here, shop here, and also shop in Syracuse.
Think Canadians are going to pass up Carousel Mall down here?
No, we don't think so, but we think that they might welcome a small community to stay in versus, you know, stay in the big city. Normally, these shopping centers could spend a couple of days, a couple of nights.
Yeah, you may be right about that because they are notoriously thrifting.
I have worked an advertising program with the Syracuse Chamber. We have already done it, and we've been quite successful at it. People do come down, and they will come into Fulton to stay and shop in Syracuse. A lot of them don't want to be, they want to hustle, hustle. And we're only a half hour away from Carousel for all the major shopping centers. We need to promote it, it's working.
Now you're asking, when the budget is already in place, really, now you want us, the council, to budget for $5,000?
For what? All we're asking for for that program is $750 to get it started.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Okay. You know, next year, we're talking about spending some money on that. Are there any other questions on the 1992?
Well, here's one of the problems that we are confronted with. The council has already authorized $3,500 for the Historical Society. You've got $1,873 as the actual amount, $2,000 that was budgeted. I don't know what the council's going to do about that.
You talking about the 93 budget? $3,500?
Yeah.
Yes, it's the 93.
This is the 93. You have a proposal for 93. I assume that's what you're asking for in 93, isn't that right?
No, I've got a 93 budget.
Oh.
Basically, it follows along the same line. According to Motel, we're anticipating that the occupancy tax receipts will go up a little bit for next year. So we're anticipating a modest increase of $2,000. Understanding or realizing, of course, full well, that we can only spend what you collect in bed tax money. So the budget is going to have to be responsive to that. We're talking about matching funds, revenues getting in, investments from private sectors, local organizations, approximately $6,000.
Excuse me, what is matching funds program? Am I not familiar?
The Canadian shopping program, for example, will be funded 50% by the city bed tax funds, 50% by private people like the whole motor lodge, quality, debt, quality, and local merchants, restaurants, that type of thing.
They're going to help with $6,000.
The mail from before, whatever, that's why you said it's fluid, it depends on both the bed tax revenues and the amount of money that we can come up with. We're anticipating expenses roughly the same for events. Riverfest, $6,000, Memorial Day, $2,500, Historical Society, $2,000, matching funds program, expenses approximately $9,000 if we can carry it off. Not just for Canadian shopping in Stanley, but perhaps we're also talking about developing a small fishing program, promoting fishing in the river. And administrative support for the Chamber up slightly for next year. Again, anticipating more activity and a larger program. And other events for matching funds, we're talking about reaching out to, for example, the youth hockey organization and some of those local organizations, the auto races and that type of thing, under a similar matching funds type of thing. Promote, the city of Fulton, promote events, the city of Fulton, promote events that hopefully will bring people in to stay here for at least overnight or a couple of days. And that's the program that we worked out for 93.
Again, the matching funds promotion for $2,500. Are you saying that merchants will try to get them to match that? I guess I still have... is that $3,500 for the Historical Society out of the bed tax?
Yes, it is.
And that's already been authorized in the budget?
For next year?
Yeah.
What do they... they came to us and asked us, or recommendations came to us, and it was for capital improvements. How does that, is that, you know, how is that distributed through tourism? We told them, in the back of the program, whether they're promoting a brochure or something, they said to the great people here.
Well, I think Historical Society is, in effect, something attractive. And that's respect, I suppose you could say, it relates to tourism.
Well, we're trying to develop a promotional program here, and that's not promotional.
I understand.
It is promotional because they're going to do renovations to the inside so that people want to walk through and look and see and stay in the house a while instead of looking at it as something falling apart.
I would suggest that maybe we might take a look at the laws, because I don't think they allow us to capital improve. I think that's one of the things that's not allowed.
Is $3,500 considered capital improvement?
The proposal they sent to us about?
The proposal that they talked to us about was making a room for showing what our industry does in the city of Fulton. Putting in some new lights and having an exhibit for showing what industry in the city of Fulton presently does, which we thought was a good idea at the time.
They're also trying to collect artifacts to show them properly as a museum.
We didn't consider that a capital improvement.
I guess I have to say that, you know, we came to you, you know, six or eight months ago and asked you to consider the Tourism Council as an advisory body to this council. And...
Well, there isn't any question about that yet, as far as the advisory is concerned.
Well, I guess the council, in other words, is going to keep appropriating money down to bed tax without consulting the advisory group, then what are we here for?
Well, ultimately, the council, of course, is responsible for the distribution of that money. They feel, apparently, that the Historical Society is an important segment of the city. And I think they are. And I think they are promotional in a sense, too. And the project makes a lot of sense. But the final analysis, the council will have to decide, that's...
Well, can it approve?
Well, the whole budget hasn't been approved, and I mean, that's what's on for a public hearing tonight. And I assume that they're going to be here to discuss it. I thought they were going to be here at 6:30, but apparently not.
Is that what it's going to say when we discuss the bed tax?
Yeah, anything on the budget, that's...
Are there other elements of the bed tax that you found?
Nothing I'm aware of. $6,000?
Yeah, I think we did Riverfest and Memorial Day Salute, that those are the only other two.
One recommendation I would ask that we ask you to consider is that you might think about is treating the bed tax money as a whole, just $1,000 or $22,000, whatever it turns out to be. And then think about signing off on an overall marketing program for all promotion and tourism activities in one fell swoop. Because I think it's going to be complicated if sign off using the bed tax money, one program at a time, may end up at the end of the year with having missed some of the overall objectives that everyone seems to be interested in, which is how probably, you know, what's the very best way of getting a mention for this city? And I think sometimes it's helpful if you can see all of the alternatives at one time and then say, yes, this really is the very best way. But I think the struggle decides a great program. But the question is, is this the very, very best thing to do in life?
Well, probably actually what should have been done is Tourism Council should have consulted with Budget Committee. Okay? Obviously, neither party recognized that or thought of that. I can see why, it's a whole new program anyway. And with all the other stuff that Budget Committee had to deal with, obviously, they didn't think of that. And I'm sure you didn't because, again, it's a new program.
You know, one thing, Ann...
That might be the thing to do down the road.
Is, what we need to do is get together before the budget and see a proposal like this. And then we can say, if somebody comes to us, and we can say, hey, we have our money allocated, you know, if we approve something like this. You know, it was a long time since we said you would be the one who would advise us on distributing these funds until now. We need to sit down and talk a little bit more often, I think.
I think one of the things that's going to be interesting to the council about this approach to administering bed tax money is that it was a good way to get limited dollars to go further. That, just say that we've got $20,000 in bed tax money to spend. If we spend it strictly on program by program basis, we're going to end up spending $20,000 to spend a day. We figure out how to pull it together into a matching funds program, that instead of having $20,000 to work with, we've got $30,000 to work with. And we get a lot more kicked through the City of Tourism Committee office. And I don't know what it was too late to do it, but one thing to consider would be to approve tonight's budget, but the whole bed tax item, and say that we treat the bed tax item separately.
You've got to remember, Ann, one of the problems that you have with the bed tax money is the council cannot turn that over to any organization.
Never, ever, ever suggested you do that.
All right. Well, then, then the way to go is, again, for the Budget Committee to meet with the Tourism Council. You're suggesting that the bed tax money be treated as a separate item in the budget?
So that you can see it all together.
I don't see anything wrong with that.
Yeah, we can see it all together and make a decision about the whole pot of money at one time, and just make sure that that's the best way to spend the money.
You know, you raised a question earlier about, you know, like the inappropriate use of the bed tax monies. You know, I happen to know that in the city of Watertown, which is the city of water, the state auditor just criticized the city of Watertown for funding events, for funding Riverfest life and, what do you call it, events? You know, there might be a problem there down the road. The county of Oswego, the legislation is identical to the Jefferson County legislation.
Well, I think, yeah. Lot of problems probably that has to be straightened out. A lot of problems probably that has to be straightened out. I think your idea of treating it as a separate item in the budget is a good idea. I'm just not sure exactly how you go about it now, if the council decides they want to do that, just exactly how we go about it. Because now we have a budget before us and a public hearing on the budget.
What if you say that, under an expense item, that you just plan on an expenditure of twenty thousand dollars for bed tax money, and that you don't identify how that twenty thousand dollars is going to be used at this moment?
What does that mean?
You know, identify in the first week in January.
Yeah, then that means deleting from the general budget those items that have been already earmarked out of the bed tax.
I'll hold it for consideration and then make a decision. I mean, I don't know why you need to force yourselves to make the decision on that tonight before you see a full program.
That's not forcing ourselves, because we had these people sit across from the table with us and present what they needed, and we appropriated the money. And now, without them being here to represent themselves, to take it away from them and say, no, we're not going to give it to you, isn't fair. It's too bad you weren't there at the table at the same time and saying, this is what we want. So I think it would be inappropriate now to go back on our word.
An issue of confusion, because our understanding from the July meeting was that the Tourism Council was going to be consulted and bored deciding how to use that. And I don't think that, I mean, as John said, it was by myself, you know, so...
I think you're right. Unfortunately, that isn't what happened. You know, I agree. And I think your proposal's a good idea. I don't know whether we can implement it now at this time. That's part of the problem.
I guess the council's going to make these determinations, and there's no need for the Tourism Council.
Well, Ed, don't feel that way. You know, we're all, you know, this whole year has been a year of experimentation. There have been a lot of new things that have come up, a lot of new things to consider, and this council had a lot of problems to wrestle with. This is only one of them. And, you know, you've got to give us some latitude on this. We're only human, and this committee has worked awful hard on this budget, and I'm sorry for the oversight. But there's no reason why either. If there is some kind of shortfall, that the council can't in the future appropriate more money to make up for that. They have a contingency budget that can be used for that purpose. I don't think anybody disagrees with the value of the Tourism Council. I certainly don't. I think it's a very valuable adjunct to the city. But, you know, we all make mistakes. I'm sure you've made your share. I know I have.
Ed, one thing, if we, if we consider and like this proposal, maybe what we would do is take fifteen hundred dollars out of the contingency and give it to the Historical Society and run with this proposal. It's not, not something we shouldn't consider.
Do you think it would make sense to plan meetings in, like, in the next week or in early January? You know, if the camera gets out?
Sure. I don't think there's anybody here that's going to be adverse to this.
No, no.
You know, and if we, fifteen hundred dollars is not a lot of money to be saying we're going to disband the Tourism Council.
And we do appreciate all the work you've done.
Sure.
It's very hard for the community to put a ton of time into trying to work this thing out, and everyone keeps them pretty motivated.
Absolutely, no. I'm sure everybody recognizes that. Thank you very much. accommodate attorneys from Albany. Okay, to discuss a contract with one of the city unions. So I'll call the meeting to order now so that we can then make the motion to adjourn to executive session, because it's early to start the regular meeting anyway. Roll call, please.
Mayor.
Here.
First Ward.
Here.
Third Ward.
Here.
Fourth Ward.
Here.
Fifth Ward.
Here.
Sixth Ward.
Here.
President, your name.
Motion to adjourn to executive session.
I'll move it.
Second.
All in favor, indicate by aye.
Aye.
Opposed by no. Carry. We'll be right back. Please don't go away. Where is everybody?
He will be right back.
Shall we go without him? I got it. How'd you leave it, Speed? I apologize for the delay. It seems like, no matter how hard we try, we always get out here a little late. But that helps the people that are late, I hope. Okay. Motion to reconvene.
I'll move it.
Second. All in favor, indicate by aye.
Aye.
Opposed by no. Carry. First item, please.
Resolve that the following fees are hereby adopted in the Fulton City Code effective January one, nineteen ninety-three as follows.
First item is my budget message. Joe didn't know I was going to give one. I crossed them up. First, I'd like to welcome everybody that's here tonight. It's nice to see that many people that show that much interest in the budget. And I hope that before you walk out of here tonight, you'll walk out feeling that the budget is one that we can live with. I want to congratulate the Budget Committee, John Crook, the chairman, Ross Balfieri, and Jimmy Myers, for their long hours, hard work, and a thankless job in getting a budget out on time, assuming that it is approved tonight. They've been working on this for about three or four months and spending a lot of time trying to put it together. The budget is basically based on data furnished by the department heads. We don't have really any other available information, and we have to depend upon the department heads to furnish us with the information that they use to come up with a budget. And without a comptroller, or a budget officer, or a finance officer, somebody in that role, you have to depend on the department heads. They claim they're bare bones figures, and we have no other way to believe otherwise. So the committee came up with the best budget they could under those circumstances, without cutting services and/or reducing personnel. And I think the committee should be commended for doing an excellent job with what they had to work with. And I'm sure the department heads did their best, considering the fact they're not experts in the budget process, and no more than the members of the committee or I am. And they're subject to their own limitations in coming up with their figures. After all, got to remember they're hired to do a job, and they're not efficiency experts or CPAs. But I want to mention the fact that a ten million dollar corporation, and that basically is what the city is, without a comptroller or financial expert to oversee financial operations is doomed to failure within a month of its birth. I'm talking about a business corporation now. Never heard of a business corporation of that size that operates without such an officer? Because if they did, and they relied on their department heads to tell them how much money they need to run their departments, that business is not going to be in business very long. And by now, I think everybody here is familiar with large corporations that are going under, even when they do have help. So you can imagine what it's like in a municipal corporation. We don't have the problem to worry about a cash, whether the cash flow exceeds or equals expenses. Because all a municipal corporation does is they simply raise your taxes, or cut down on personnel, or cut down on services, or a combination of the above. And that's the weakness of a municipal corporation. So that without that finance officer, it's like operating with blindfold on your eyes. You might as well do it by the touch as any other, because that method would be just as effective. I have to say that I'm disappointed in the budget. Not because I don't think that the committee did the best job that they could under the circumstances, because they did. But I am disappointed because there's nothing in there provides for long-range planning. And under that, heading improvements in the infrastructure, including the water, sewer lines, roads, and so on. Our roads are in desperate shape. I would have liked to have seen some long-range planning, even if we had to bond for a large amount of money, to get a substantial amount of roads under construction or reconstruction next year. All we have in the budget is an additional hundred thousand dollars, plus what we'll get in ship's money from the state, and we're not sure what that'll be or if it'll be anything. Which is a start, but unfortunately, it won't go very far. Under long-range planning, too, I was hoping there would be some consolidation of departments, which would help to free up money for the appointment of a comptroller or of the equivalent to oversee the budget process. That they could do this throughout the year, instead of waiting until the end of the year, then trying to put something together in a hurry. And officer, too, who would supervise where your money is going. Start off with a zero-based budget, for example, and then each department would have to justify what they want and how they're going to spend it. We don't have that kind of control. We have a certain amount of money allocated to a department, and the department head determines how that money is spent. Again, if a business corporation tried to operate like that, they wouldn't last very long. And again, I want to say on behalf of department heads, they may believe that that's the best way to do it. As far as their knowledge of business operations is concerned, they're doing, again, the best they can. But unfortunately, I don't think it's the most efficient way to operate. And I'm sure there's a lot of money that could be saved if we had some kind of financial supervision that would keep track of where our money's going, why, and be sure it's well spent. I would have liked to have seen some plans and some money allocated for development of the waterfront and Lake Nianawana. We have marvelous, marvelous resources there. We're very lucky to have them. Most cities would give their eye teeth to have what we have in that respect. The state is very interested in developing the canal lands, and I'm sure you're going to see money available for that purpose. And I think that's why the management of the Barge Canal was put into the hands of the Department of Transportation. Now, the head of that department spoke at a symposium that I attended on the canal, development of canal lands. And let me tell you, he's a sharp guy. And if the fate of canal lands rests in his hands, they're in good hands. But we have a resource there, together with tourism, that I think is potentially worth a lot to this city. But before we can develop it, what's required, before we can get any funding, and the funding is there, is a master plan. State isn't going to give you money or the federal government if you don't know what you're going to do with it. Now, Oswego has such a master plan, for example, for the Brennaman Building. And let me tell you, I was impressed. Buffalo and Towanda have one for ninety miles of lakefront on Lake Ontario. And let me tell you, that place is going to make everybody forget about the fact that Lackawanna gave up and left when they get through. They're going to bring in tons of money from that project, and it'll be far more than Lackawanna ever paid in real estate taxes. So we need that master plan. Okay, yeah, it means spending money, but you've got to spend money to make money. And we're not going anywhere if we just go along with a Band-Aid approach to a budget. And that's basically what you have here. And again, the council did the best they could under the circumstances, but that's what it bounced to, and that doesn't give us a boost to go anywhere. We need to expand that marina. That's, again, what the state would like to see done with marinas such as ours. And you not only can expand that marina, you can tie in downtown into that marina and into the development of the riverfront. And that's going to bring in money, that's going to bring in people, that's going to make people aware and alive of the fact that this city is here and that it is a city that is vital and alive. It's going to bring in new businesses. Heck, you could put business resources right on the riverbank across the road. They don't have to be on flat land. Lot of places where you'll see houses and businesses built on riverbanks like that. You know, what an attraction that could be, whether it's a business, or whether it's a condo, or whatever it is, again, it creates interest. We, again, start out with the advantage of having already a waterfront along the river of concrete. That costs a lot of money to put one of those in. And the cost of putting, of putting it into shape compared to the cost of building a new one is trivial. So we start out with a lot of advantages here. We've got a recreation park I'd like to see developed. Again, you need a master plan, and you've got a committee that's working on that, and they're doing a hell of a job. Howie Single, Joe Allerton, and others are working on that. I saw some of their plans today. I'm impressed. Again, we have a terrific resource there. But again, you've got to invest some money into it. And that means developing the West Side Business Section along with that and on their own as well. West Side's been too long neglected. It's just as much an important part of our business as anything else. And they should be encouraged. And I think if a little money is needed to help spur that encouragement, that we should spend it. I'd like to see the development of tourism. It's always been one of my favorites. We've got a big boost in that respect from the Chamber of Commerce. And Anne Marbeto Snyder is doing a fantastic job in that direction. They want to build a new chamber and have a tourist interpretive center, which I think is a marvelous idea. And if they need any help, we should be ready to give it to them. Put it up there. They want to put it on four-eight-one across from Faze. What a spot. You know, people coming in the city, they're going to see that, they're going to be impressed by that, they're going to go in, hopefully, they're going to learn about our city, about our industry, and they're going to want to see more, and we want, we should be ready to provide that. I'd like to see the scope of River Fest enlarged on both sides of the river. It has a tremendous potential, and a lot of people who've spent a lot of time and energy in that, people that, along with other committees in the city, are showing a real spark of interest in developing the city. And I find that very encouraging. are showing a real spark of interest in developing the city, and I find that a very encouraging sign, that people are interested and do want to do things. I'd like to encourage business downtown, promote attractions to that area. And if we again have to invest a little money, it's going to be coming back, I think, manyfold. I'd like to see the city improved, the ambience of the city improved with touches like you see in cities like Oswego, Reading, Pennsylvania. It doesn't take very much. A unique lamppost, for example, even those alone can stimulate interest. Benches, some decent trash barrels. God, some of those trash barrels make me want to bark. And the state too would like to see things of that kind improved around their marinas and add more amenities so that the boats, the people there will be, want to stop here. They're going to say, hey, Fulton's a place where you want to go. They've got this and that and the other thing. I saw a plan for Fairport, a city as small like Fulton on the canal. Wow, what a job. Made me want to go there, and all I saw was their plan. So I guess what I'm really saying is, while I understand and I realize that the committee that drew up this budget did the best they could, I would have liked to have seen something far, more far-reaching, some planning that's going to enhance the image of the city and the lives of the people who live here. Thank you. Anyone from the council have any comments? I think better, at first, I'd better open the public here.
Are we going to talk about budget right now, or are we talking about?
Oh, all right. All right, we got item two to, on some fees before we open the public hearing.
Resolve that the following fees are hereby adopted in the Fulton City Code effective January 1, 1993 as follows. Add subsection 7825 Housing Maintenance. Rental permit fees. Rental permits shall be required for each rental dwelling unit. These permits will be valid for two years. Upon the filing of the application for a rental permit, a fee in the amount of $30 for each rental dwelling unit shall be paid to the Chamberlain of the City of Fulton. No fee shall be required for property owned and leased or occupied by the City of Fulton. This fee waiver, however, shall not exempt or preclude any inspections as required by this ordinance. Two, amend subsection 177-38B. Application for a variance shall be made to the zoning inspector on such forms as he may prescribe for a fee of $25.
Any comment? Motion.
I'll move it.
Second.
All in favor indicate by aye.
Aye.
opposed by no. Carried. Item three, please.
City clerk was directed and advertised to, for a public hearing that December 15, 1992 at 7:30 PM for the proposed 1993 Fulton City budget. Mayor Valet now declares the public hearing is open.
Any comment first from the council?
I have a comment. As budget chairman, what we tried to do this year with the budget was to develop a realistic budget and maintain the present services that we have in the city. We also looked at, as a budget committee, of Jimmy Myers, Ross Balfiore, and myself, was to look at some of the problems that we were experiencing as aldermen, the type of calls we were getting, and try to address some of those things in the budget. One of the items was mowing. We put on some additional people for mowing city parks, city property, those properties that people did not mow. We looked at some of the old structures that we have in the city. We recently passed an unsafe structure ordinance. We put in the budget some money for taking down some houses that we feel are unsafe. There's a lot of houses in the city, and we've all gotten complaints about them that are real eyesores. We tried to address that problem also. We feel that we've developed a plan for the city and some kind of direction to start with. And I think we all agree with George that we need some more far-reaching things. But as you're going on running the business of the city on a day-to-day basis, we're kind of looking a year ahead right now. And I agree that we do need to look further. But in running a business, we have to develop this budget for one year ahead. And we didn't want to put undue burden onto the residents of the City of Fulton in the way of tax increases. We looked at that when we were looking at our expenses and our revenues. If you look at the budget, you'll notice that expenses have gone up 1.7%, which is not a lot. Our expenses in this city, I feel, have been in line. Problems that we've been experiencing have been in revenues. Our sales tax is down. We're anticipating ending this year at about 3.3 million. In the past, we've gotten more sales tax than that. We're looking at possible reduction in assessments from a major industry. That in itself is the tax increase that we're asking for. We're also looking at, in the past three years, that we've lost state aid, which is a big reason for last year's big tax increase. The same thing that the City of Oswego was experiencing. So we looked at all those, all those things when we put this budget together. And said, we want to try and get the city on track in going in some direction and minimizing the amount of tax burden on the people. We put in more for paving, and yes, it isn't a lot. One thing I think we have to do next year as a council is really take advantage of what we've got budgeted in our CHIPS money. This year, I don't believe we used all our CHIPS money. CHIPS is what we get from the state for highway improvements. We need to get a better handle on that, which is why we increased the amount in the budget. So we want to see some improvements. Yeah, they're going to be minimal to start, but it is a start, and next year we hope to build on it. And if we look at some forward planning, I think we can start addressing some of the things that the mayor is saying. Because there's nobody that will disagree with the things that he's saying as far as the improvements that can be done in this town. It takes money. We're in a deficit situation. We hope to reduce the deficit this year. We did some projections and think that we can. So that's about it. Does anybody else on the budget committee have anything they'd like to add?
Yeah. Thank you, John.
Our problem is with revenues, and it's difficult when you have a city where 52% of your population is on welfare. That doesn't help to enhance the revenues. Also, when you have over 1,000 pieces of property that's tax-exempt, that doesn't help. I have a short statement as far as how we came about putting the budget together. As an elected guardian of the public monies, I believe that the budget committee, along with the department heads, have given our utmost attention to ensure proper management of public funds. It should be understood that a degree of city finances are governed and restricted by state law and state constitution. The presentations of the tentative budgets took several months to prepare and review. The budget is a reflection of the city's policies and deals with a wide range of issues. The issue of real property tax increase was arrived through estimating expenditures and estimating non-property tax sources of revenue. The property tax will be used to fill the gap between the expenditures and the revenues. In reference to the revenues, the new rates for garbage pickup is within the city's right to impose. This is to be considered as a benefit-based charge. That is, they directly connect the person receiving the service and the person paying for the service. We decided to take this avenue because it did not add to the level of the property tax. This method of fee assessment allows the voluntary use of the service, even if the user is traditionally exempt from property taxes. The budget will serve as an operational guide and an outline of organization of the city government. Most importantly, the budget is a vehicle for communication with city residents about the workings of our government.
Thank you, Ross. Anybody else from the council? Any comments from the public? Alice?
Comments from Mr. Crook on CHIPS, that's the state for the removal of snow, that, I presume that's for the removal of snow for the arterial?
No. CHIPS is a state program that gives the city about $160,000 a year for road improvements. Correct me if I'm wrong, but is it for paving, for, I think, sidewalk repair?
Does it have anything to do with the snow removal?
I don't believe so.
No.
You know, you're talking about revenue, and I know it isn't a big one. Buying in Fulton probably isn't as big a revenue because we don't have as many stores. But I'll tell you one thing, if there were stores, we can't get down to them. You walk, there are no sidewalks paved, no sidewalks at all, even businesses, which I think should. Now, that automotive company on the side there on Rochester and the arterial, the snow is that high, and there's no passageway to get through. I went down today to the bank, and we have to walk in the road. Well, no wonder people are getting hit by cars. We just don't have sidewalks to walk on. If the state is giving any money at all, I think some of it should be used to clean the sidewalks. We just can't get downtown. I don't even drive because of the part of the problem with the bridge. I got stuck 15 minutes down the bridge the other day because of an accident, and I was on that bridge for 15 minutes. So I walk. While I walk, I can't get down the streets anyway. And if more people are not getting down there because they can't walk, we should do something about sidewalks, especially. It's bad enough on the streets where people live. I don't know why that's never been enforced, because when grasses and cut, the city takes over and charges the homeowner for cutting the grass. But in the wintertime, snow doesn't seem to bother anybody, and you have to walk in the streets. We become street walkers.
You're right, Alice. Unfortunately, CHIPS money, you can't be used for that purpose.
I know what CHIPS was, that's why. They do give money, don't they, for you to maintain the arterial in the city? Does the state help to maintain the plowing?
Yeah, that's right.
The best thing the state could do is change that arterial and shove it outside the city. We wouldn't have so many people.
Well, if you did that, then it'd turn Fulton into a ghost town. That's the only problem.
I don't think so.
Take a look at Phoenix. But, yeah, I agree with you on the sidewalks. They should be, are shoveled. One of the problems with the sidewalks is just like the one I have at my place. The plows, of course, when they go down, shoot a lot of snow, it's loaded with salt, sand, and everything else, onto the sidewalk. I have a five-horse snow blower, and it has a tough time blowing that. So for the average person who has to shovel, and particularly older people, that could be a real problem. And this is, you can do that three or four times a day sometimes.
But there should be, if the city doesn't have the money, which we don't seem to have the money for anything, once the plows go through, and we live close, our sidewalk is right close, like yours probably, where the plow brings it all right back on the sidewalk. Clean it, and it comes right back. It seems they just time it so that when we clean it, they come right back. But it's heavy, and I know that's got to be done, but there should be some way that the streets go into downtown. Because once I get off, the main streets are the most dangerous. Like, our street, Buffalo Street, isn't too bad, because once we get down the hill, you know, you can walk in the road that little distance. But the main streets, the arterial, I hate walking in the arterial. I get splashed by the trucks, and I'm sure I'm not alone. Maybe more people would go downtown and shop.
Well, I agree with you, and that is something I'll look into and try to keep that plowed out. We have a small machine that does the downtown section, and maybe we can extend it. But as far as, no, you've got to catch 22 situation. If you don't plow the streets, of course, the cars are in trouble. If you do plow the streets, then you plug up the sidewalks, and the main problem is it comes from up there, okay? If we could regulate that, then we wouldn't have any problem. Only thing I'm thankful for is that big storm didn't hit us. But I'll see what we can do. Maybe we can arrange to plow more of the sidewalks in the downtown area.
They had that bucket that came by. Bucky probably knows. That was nice. They'd come right down the streets and clean all that snow off the sidewalks, and you could walk on the sidewalks again. Now, they did that one winter, but they've never done it since. I don't know where the bucket broke or...
All the way from Broadway to 9th Street.
But it seemed like the tire actually snow accumulated and frozen and gotten down there. When it's done, as soon as the snow falls, it's nice and fluffy, easy to do, but not so good.
Well, another problem is manpower. Again, another catch 22 problem. We're already over our budget on snow removal for this year. We're getting, taking money out of the contingency fund to finish the year, and that's part of the problem. Because the more men you put out there, the more overtime you pay, and we don't have that money. If anybody can come up with that solution, I'd be loved to hear it. Yes, hon?
Short question. I think Mr. Crook said something about CHIPS money that wasn't used. Is that correct?
Well, CHIPS money wasn't used because it came so late this year that it was too late in the year to be able to pave. The weather was against it.
When does it normally come?
We don't know anymore.
When the state approves the budget.
Yeah, and when Como feels like releasing it.
See, the reason for increasing the amount in paving is so that we'd have that money so we could automatically get started, even if the state did not approve the budget until midsummer or late summer. We could still get started. In the past, sometimes we've waited till the approval. And you can't do that because you only have so many months here that you can pave streets. We want to get an earlier start on paving.
Committee did a good job on that. That really will help a lot.
Couple of other points I'd like to bring up, Mayor. I'd like to compliment you and the department heads. You've emphasized keeping costs down, and that has really helped in the expense area. If it wasn't for that, we would not be reducing our deficit this year. We're looking at less expenses than we budgeted. And I thank all the department heads and yourself for paying attention to what they're spending should be complimented. Secondly, if we look at the revenue side of this, there's some things that we as citizens, as a council, as a community development agency, as a Chamber of Commerce, can do to help our revenue side. I think we really have to work at filling our stores downtown. That's where sales tax comes from. If we have vacant stores, it's not helping any of us in this city, because they're not generating any sales tax. I think we need to work to attract people into our, into our community. We have a housing development that the Patricks are putting up over on Hannibal Street. The more people we can attract to our community to build homes, the more tax dollars we're generating. And they're coming into our city and spending more money. We need to shop Fulton. If you're going to go out of town, buy your gas here and fill up before you leave. Don't wait till you get down the road. I think we need to find new ways of generating revenue. I know just recently, we, we've hired two part-time skate guards. And for the last skating week or two, we paid them $186. Well, we took in over $500 on public skating. Those are the kind of things that we have to be thinking of. And everybody should be thinking of these ways to try and improve our community.
Diana?
The line of revenue. City of Fulton's got enough water to sell like the Palm of Valley or Tonne of Gramby. As long as they put the lines in and kept them, you know, maintained them or anything else, would that be good revenue? They, we can't add extra volume here in Gramby. They've got the room. But if they had the facilities, which I've read an awful lot about, that they want sewer systems and water, would we get the money on that if we sold them?
That raises another question, Diana, which is involved with water and sewer from the city to the towns. And we're in the process now of dickering with the towns over those issues. Yes, we have the water. To the towns, it would be. Would we make good money? I think the amount of money we'd make would be fairly trivial.
It's also a different budget.
Yeah. Linda?
You know, my concern is, you have $100,000 allocated for roads. $5,000... thousand dollars for sidewalks. Uh, you said that the money from CHIPS came in late last year. What if the money from CHIPS comes in late next year? And you say we need to promote things, but I'll tell you something, we pull in a lot of people from outside Syracuse to Swego. Our, our roads are a joke here. You know, we got all this speculation. And, and I, as a businessperson, I've never seen a budget like, like this one before and the one that's broken down. Some people have it, some people don't. And, and, and I look at this and I, I'm, I'm wondering, like, postage. Every department has their own allocation for postage, supplies, uh, materials. Why is it that that does not go through one office where it's rec- somebody has to put in a requisition for that? I mean, I think that when you look at this budget and see everything that's in it and, and it's like, there, there doesn't seem to be a lot of control over it.
There isn't.
And the thing is, you know, you say a hundred thousand dollars, that's less than seventeen thousand dollars for each ward because I know our money's not gonna be given away again this year or next year. And I, I'm really, and that's, uh, I'm really concerned about that. So I'm wondering if there's any insight into this, our future as, are we looking for a controller? Is there something that's gonna be done differently that hasn't been done?
I'll just hear.
I, I'd like to say something about the Department of Commerce. I'll ask a question a little bit. At the last budget workshop that we had, sitting right here, there was a considerable turnout of people here that were concerned about what was going on and how we were making decisions and what we were considering. And the audience, and there was a lot of representation from the fire and the police department here. And the main issue that I think came out of that, which was an excellent work session, at least we all thought it was, was that it was almost imminent that we have to look and find a way to finance a city manager slash controller, whatever. It's, it was their feeling that this would probably be one of the best moves that the city could possibly make for controlling their budget tighter than what it is now.
Dave?
I'm John, Mayor.
John, sorry.
Thank you. I heard, uh, Mayor, common council, I heard the word revenue kicked around an awful lot this evening and that's what I'm here to talk about. Right now, we have in the city some thirty-seven million dollars worth of assessed property. It's the total assessment, nothing was exempt. Can you use the microphone? Can you hear me? Can you hear it? John?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Okay. We presently have some thirty-seven million dollars of property as it exists, as it is ex- as it is assessed. The present time, however, only some nineteen million, six hundred and sixteen thousand is assessed property that is not exempt. There's some seventeen and a half million dollars worth of exempt property in our city, which equals about forty-seven point two percent of the properties. The total potential assessed value in the City of Fulton is presently not paying taxes. That creates a problem. And the problem really is, this chart gets a little complex and I'll have handouts for anyone that wants it, but I made a comparison of the budget this year. Going back eight years was a budget of nineteen eighty-five. And as you compare this data, you notice that the city has done a commendable job at holding costs. In fact, as we show on this graph, the total budget in eight years has only increased some thirty-six percent. It's really amazing and it's not only a credit to this council, the councils prior to this. But the tax rate, because of the decline in federal and state aid and sort of a stabilization of sales tax revenue, has increased some two hundred and twenty-four percent in the City of Fulton in eight years. Back in nineteen eighty-five, residential and commercial property contributed some thirteen point nine percent of the total revenues in the City of Fulton. This year, they'll contribute some thirty-one point one percent. In terms of an increase in percentage, that's a two hundred and twenty-three point seven percent increase and we show that right here. But in terms of real dollars, the residential and commercial property tax base contributed some two hundred and forty-four point six thousand dollars back in nineteen eighty-five. And today, their share of the budget is a million, two hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars. That's an increase of some five hundred and thirteen percent. And that's happening because you haven't got enough assessable property. You've got a problem with your assessment, people. Industry and utility back in nineteen eighty-five used to contribute about eleven and a half percent of the total revenue in this city. Today, they contribute nine point four percent of the total revenue in this city. It's down seventeen and a half percent. In terms of dollars, the actual money that they contribute to the budget, they used to pay some two hundred thousand, six hundred dollars. This year, they'll be paying two hundred and forty-four thousand dollars. It's an increase of twenty-two percent. Now, one might look at this and on the surface say, well, the reason that residential and commercial properties are paying a greater share of the budget is because we've had a growth in that particular area. The assessed value since nineteen eighty-five is down seven and a half percent. It's down from twenty-one million to nineteen million. You've got to look at full value assessment as the source of continuing revenue. Things I heard at this table tonight were great and everyone was prefaced by the word revenue. And I happen to agree with what was said at this table tonight. And the only way, you have a reduction of federal aid, reduction of state aid, you have a city that's probably ninety-eight or ninety-nine percent developed, you're not going to have an expanding tax base from new development, is to get everything up to one hundred percent value today so that everyone pays their fair share in taxes, and then you'll have an increasing revenue base to start with in future years to do the good things that I heard discussed at this table this evening. Thank you.
Don, I have a question. We had experts in on this question, uh, full value reevaluation from the state and private. Both of them agreed that it would not net any more taxes. My question too is, why does that, do you and some others say you've got to do full value when all the state requires is equal value? Full value is fraught with all kinds of dangers, as has been proven by other communities that have adopted it, where outside praisers come in arbitrarily set values on property simply because there has been a com- a comparable sales in that area without regard to what the actual value, market value of each individual unit is. And I've heard some real horror stories about that.
I've heard some horror stories too, Mayor, but market value is, a comparable sale is an indication of market value and any assessment can be appealed.
Well, we all, we all know how that turns out.
Well, we don't. And I don't, you know, I don't necessarily agree with that. I know that when the town of Manlyus did it, uh, they, they originally had some, some problems with their assessment system. Today, their assessment appeals are, are very modest.
Sure, because nobody finds out when they appeal and it doesn't get them anywhere.
No, that, that's not so. They have a good handle on market values in the community and they're able to justify the assessed value of the property. When you say fair value, fair value denotes in my mind that everyone pays the fair value of their property.
That's right.
It's fair market value, really. Uh, I don't wanna point out any individuals, I, and I don't mean to point out individual cases, but recently, the Minato Hydro Plant was assessed by a nation, a national recognized authority and I understand that the court ruled in favor of the town of Minato. That happened to be an eight thousand kilowatt hydroelectric plant and it was, it was assessed at sixteen point one million dollars, not including land. Well, we have here in Fulton, a hydroelectric, we have four hydroelectric plants, by the way. Uh, we have one hydroelectric plant that's some forty-five hundred kilowatts. It carries an assessment at two hundred thousand dollars. And if you take the equalization rate, which is an arbitrary fudge figure, but it happens to be six point seven two percent, that works out to two point nine million dollars. That's substantially less than what a court just ruled was fair market value in Minato.
Have you talked to Diane recently?
Yes, I have, Mayor.
Did she tell you we're in the process of reassessing these utilities as well as exempt properties?
No, I didn't ask her that question. She said she has a file-
We are.
-of your electric plants.
Yeah.
And I'm glad to hear it.
Yeah.
But the city spent some seventy or eighty thousand dollars for data collection and the data collection sits on the shelf. There's no one, not your assessor, not the county assessor, not I, not the governor of the state of New York that's qualified to make a, as to what would happen to revenue streams until someone does the study that needs to be done to see what full value assessment would do for the community.
I know what full value assessment has done to communities. An old forge in the town of Webb, they did it three years ago and it was so bad that a year later, they reduced all assessments by one half.
Mayor-
They were assessing properties based on a few sales and everybody was assessed kind- and these were people that let, owned these places for years. And you got the same situation here where, and the same thing has happened in Granby and other towns. And because somebody sold a property for a large amount, anything that came near it to that was assessed at the same amount. One poor guy was assessed at three hundred thousand dollars in, uh, Granby. And I don't think there's a place in the town of Granby that you can sell for three hundred thousand or even close to it.
Errors will be made, Mayor. I, Mayor, I don't, I don't argue that. Looking right now, the new budget at a five hundred and nine dollar per thousand tax rate in this city, city, county, and school taxes, you have a potential of arbitrarily lowering the tax rate to perhaps ten, fifteen dollars.
I don't have any objection to equal value appraisals.
We're talking the same thing, though.
Well, not really, but-
I think, I think the study needs to be done. I think we need to know what we have here.
I agree. But I just wanted you to know our assessor's office is not sitting still.
I wouldn't pretend that she was.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else? Guess, Wayne?
I'm listening to Diane and I, I don't think the problem is even full back assessment. I'm talking about the corporations maybe, uh, taking, paying a less of a share than they had, maybe in eighty-five. Well, unlike the Hydro, you keep taking money from Black Loss and Sewer, they can pick up a lead. You're gonna take more of it that way than if you keep their assessment the way it is now. I, I think that'd be the wrong way to go with them. You can't keep, and you can't keep hitting homeowners either as far as getting more revenue. And there's a lot of things in this budget here that, that, uh, people don't understand where they're coming out, like, some of these things here that, like this police fire, can med, et cetera. Last year, they had like five hundred dollars they were given. This year, they're giving fifteen hundred dollars and I don't even know what it is. I mean, the taxpayers are paying for things like that and have no idea what they are.
John, maybe you can answer that.
Yeah, I, I believe that is for, uh, medical exams for some of the, the policemen that presently are out on disability. We've increased it because we, we presently have some policemen that are out and, uh, we would like them to take medical exams.
Right now, because it's a, it's a contractual obligation, but if you look at page eight, contingency clothing, they're allowed thirty-five hundred dollars. Replacement uniforms are allowed three hundred, except for another clothing allowance, so that is seventeen thousand, three hundred and twenty-five dollars. How many uniforms do you buy there?
It's contractual.
But when's the contract due?
Last year. The contract's-
See, John, I guess what I get that, that stuff was shoved down our throats and nobody knows anything about it.
Well, I shouldn't have been shoved down your throat. I mean, that's why you're asking questions. But it's something that, that we've, we've gone through, uh, and, you know, if there's things we can do something about, then we will. But if it's something that's contractual, uh, you know, we, we're being chastised because we don't have contracts with our, with our police and our, and our DPW right now.
I guess what I boil, what it boils down is when the contracts come up, stuff like this needs to be brought up. I mean, seventeen thousand, three hundred dollars, I've had all that other stuff. And then law enforcement TV program, what's that? Which is not a contractual item, that's costing twenty, three hundred and forty dollars? I don't know.
What is that?
Law enforcement TV program.
That is a, a free program to reduce liability.
Well, you know, see, I'm saying that, but a lot of these things, PBA convention, six hundred bucks, educational benefits, another three, thirty-three hundred and fifty dollars. You know, and, and the times it's going on right now, I guess what I'm saying, if I had a guy working for me and I couldn't, you know, I didn't have the money to pay him anymore, I either have to tell him not to come around as much anymore or he's gonna have to do something about cutting his expenses now. And it, it's getting out of, it's getting out of control. And you got another one on page, uh, in the traffic department. Uh, you got one in here, it's annual safety inspection. They've got, they're giving a thousand dollars and adds up eight. Thirty-one of ninety-two, they spent zero dollars and they're getting another thousand.
Because the inspection was done, it's on the boot truck, that's a state mandated inspection, asked to be done annually, was done after the first loss.
Okay, I understand that. But why is it a thousand dollars?
Thousand dollars.
It's also-
And we get the cheese because they come in and do our truck and the fire department's trucks at the same time.
It began that, they had to come in at a different time and do it separately.
And all, all these departments have these postal, postal things. I didn't add them up. I gotta believe if you put a postal meter at one certain location in the city, I gotta believe that would cut back on some of that expense. There's a lot of things in here that, like-
A postal, a postal meter wouldn't save any money.
Yeah. I understand that.
Because if you're gonna mail something, it's still gonna cost you twenty-nine cents.
Then you'd have control who mailed what.
I, I think what he, I think what he's saying is, there's accountability.
I thought he meant-
I'm not saying, I'm not trying to figure anybody, but put it this way, somebody needs a twenty-nine cent stamp and mail their power bill out, ah, you think it'll bother anybody? At least you'll have accountability on what you're paying.
Okay.
You know, I, I guess what I'm, everything boils down to, people don't need tax increases anymore. What they need to do is start saying, if, if I took a pay cut, I certainly wouldn't spend what I had before I took the pay cut. I guess you gotta trust a little bit. And everything in here is questionable, but there are some things in here that I don't know what's going on. I mean, I could say, these guys, all the departments say, yeah, we need film for camera. Gotta have film for camera. Who am I to say they don't?
Well, it-
Or the controller, yeah. That's what the mayor was saying.
Right now, as, as your elected representative, you spend two months going through each one of these things.
I understand that, but you're going with the department, I'd say.
Well, they're, they're always giving them what they want, though.
I mean, listen, you don't.
We listen to their explanation.
But the controller will tell you exactly, Wendy.
Tell us what exactly?
I mean, if a control, a control commission said, look, uh, supplies and materials, I think they could control that a little better than what they're doing. We don't need this kind of money, supplies and materials.
That's exactly what we did as a committee.
But who's telling you, who's telling you, John? Who's telling you?
Who's telling? Well, what we do is we look at, we look at what they spent last year, uh, and see their expectations are for the coming year.
And maybe some of that was not, was maybe unnecessarily, maybe, maybe they could cut back a little bit here, here and there.
We asked for some of that.
And you were given it?
We were given it.
Okay. Parks and Recreation, no one. There's a, Department of Public Works job right there. I mean, you got guys doing the same thing that budget grant departments do and they're paying them to a hundred thousand dollar a year budget. Parks and-
You want us to get rid of recreation?
Uh, I think, yeah, yeah.
The whole department?
It could be a volunteer, somebody with volunteer, that.
You know how many calls we get on mowing this summer? That's, that's a-
Why can't the Department of Public Works mow?
Why? Why can't they mow? Because they're out doing other things. They're paving streets, they're picking up leaves, or...
You can't think-
Picking up garbage?
They can't be a consolidated department, is what you're saying. It's impossible, right?
Well, I think, I think maybe part of the year they can, in the summer, you have summer programs that we're, we wanna run. Uh, we have North Bay we wanna open up. I think asking the Department of Public Works to do that is, is spreading people too thin. Then you talk about accountability, we'll have less accountability.
Well, I guess what it boils down to is, we have to accept it. I mean, there's, there's no accountability to any of this money.
No, I think there's a lot of accountability.
I mean-
There's a lot of accountability should be accounted for in this budget.
Repairs to equipment, here's another one. Fifty-five thousand dollars, and eight, thirty-one, they only spent thirty-one. I mean-
I think you'll see some bills come in on that.
Again, John, it boils down to, we're giving another, what, uh, twenty thousand, twenty-four thousand dollars, hoping we'll see bills come in for that.
You've got a lot of them, don't you?
Yeah. I guess. I don't know, I just think there's a lot more stuff in here that you can take out.
You think, you think an increase of one point seven percent in expenses is too much? That's what you're saying?
No, I'm not saying that. What I'm saying is, why, why is expenses going up, population going down in this city?
Because you pay people more each year. Things don't stay the, things don't cost less next year. I mean, we, we pay people more money next year to plow our streets, to, uh, police our streets. You know, they expect raises too.
Well, I don't think they should be paying four minutes wage either, but these guys over at DPW, they deserve a raise too. And, and the thing, John, what, what I'm getting at is, you got a, you got a police department, thirty, how many, how many police officers, department, are each department?
I think there's thirty.
Thirty?
Thirty-five, I think.
Okay. Portland, how many?
Oswego, I said it was one.
How many is Portland, huh?
We did.
I don't know.
I don't know. They're about, uh, what was it, thirty-eight, maybe thirty-five?
That's fire, naturally by fire.
And they have a bigger, bigger population than we do.
They have combination of volunteer and paid.
And half of ours don't even live in the city. I mean, you know, and they, and they're complaining about, eh, we gotta have more money, we gotta have more benefits. I guess, you know, the thing is, I guess they don't, we don't work for them guys, they gotta work rough. If we can't pay it without keep, taking more money out of our pocket, you know, it's gotta stop somewhere. It's gotta stop.
For us to have a no-budget, uh, increase, uh, I figured it out here, we would have to reduce approximately ten people in the city of Fulton.
Okay.
Okay? If we wanna eliminate our deficit, we'd have to reduce another thirty-three people.
That's, why is the city of Fulton, like, say, for the dispatchers of Oswego, and I think some volunteers around there, I'm not sure exactly which ones, go to the central dispatching, where, you know, they call into one location, and that location dispatches the area fire departments, whoever's responsible. Why is Fulton not on that? Why do we have to have the expense of the extra man, on the shift, and all this other stuff?
Everything else is contractual. Look, if you, if you read the morning paper, you'd see that, uh, the city of Oswego was considering reducing firemen. They have a, a minimum manpower per shift, like we do. You just can't do that. Costs you more in overtime, the mayor, the mayor said, and it happened here, during the summer. We reduced one person in the fire department, and it cost us more money in overtime because we had to comply to the contract than it was keeping that man.
Wayne, I think, I think what you're saying, and I think it's the wave of the future. We're looking at, down the road, because there's gonna be more increases in wages, expenses, nothing ever goes down, it just goes up. There's gonna have to be consolidation departments, whether it's inter-town, inter-cities, inter-counties, or a combination of that, I don't know. Other cities are doing it, other towns are doing it. Some, uh, town or villages are even abolishing certain departments. We can't do that. The only other alternative to have are stations. There's no question about what. Some departments are consolidated, like Recreation and DPW. They will eliminate some duplication of efforts, will make for a more efficient operation. Uh, they're going to be, perhaps, the same thing other cities have gone to. I have talked to, uh, four mayors in different cities, and the mayor of the, uh, village of Salvi, their fire department is all volunteer, and they cover the whole town to get it. You're gonna see that, you're gonna see volunteers, uh, perhaps in all departments, I don't know. Uh, it seems to be the only way we're gonna go. And if there is a further reduction in state aid or federal aid, which is almost inevitable too, that's gonna impose other restrictions on us that we can't possibly avoid. And I think that was where you're saying. One of the ideas that was proposed by Dave Hossed, and which I think is an excellent one, is a common motor pool. Why should several departments have all different vehicles that are performing the same type of work when you could have a common motor pool and they can check out their vehicles whenever it's needed? There are other avenues for saving money besides a hiring a controller, which I think is most essential. Ron, you wanted to say something?
Unemployment insurance is not all insurance. Big decreases-
You gotta stand up for our health, you care.
Big decreases for ninety-three, why?
We just were not laying anybody off. Unemployment insurance, uh, you, you were laying people off last year, we had to pay more in unemployment benefits. As far as medical, we're hoping that, uh, some of the contracts we're trying to settle, we can, uh, increase some deductibles and reduce our medical costs.
So, you're not, well, the six hundred-
That's a projection.
All right, the six hundred fifty-five for ninety-two, is that, is that, what was what, spent ninety-two? Or is that just ninety-two's projection?
Uh, I think that was the projection, Joe. Yeah, I, I think we're maybe a little bit over.
No, I just-
Well, projection, that should be- A little bit lower, because we hope that some of the contracts will give us some relief there, because medical costs have been a big reason for, uh, us having problems at the city.
Once before with the city a couple of years ago, when they used up their budget six months from the year. I don't wanna see it after Saint Paul, July, February, December.
We've, we've tried to increase our deductibles and do some things with prescription cards, and also, uh, cap some of our very expensive programs. Hopefully, that will help us reduce our medical costs.
Ross?
George, uh, just one question here, uh, I've noticed you got an increase in the dog control, uh, pet control, and is that for, for the cost of the cats?
It is? I think it is. I, I can't remember, but I think-
What's the, what's the line?
I think it is.
After all, it's my, all of the fifth ward, uh, I got some information I'd like to show you on the animal control officer.
Yeah, you're gonna- Anne?
I really commend the county council, the work you did on the expense side of the budget. I know that you've been continuing to work in that area, I think that's terrific. Um, I'm particularly interested in the, um, opportunity that we face on this issue of assessment evaluation. Um, it looks like forty-seven percent of our assessment evaluation is exempt. If you could put that exempt property back on the tax roll, and you could cut everybody else's property taxes by half, that's a tremendous opportunity. Can you talk more about what the composition is of the property that is exempt right now, and what process you see for getting exempt property back on the rolls, and what kind of a timeframe you would have for that?
Well, I can answer part of that. The exempt properties that, uh, are exempt because they are, were ostensibly charitable organizations, some of them are not entitled to exemption, or in the process of being assessed now. A lot of that probably is veterans, and I don't mind saying, I'm one of them. I had five, were five boys in our family that were in the service. And that's another reason why I admit, I'm unholdably opposed to a hundred percent assessed valuation, because that would wipe out many of our, uh, exemptions. I mean, I think that's a hell of a thing to have somebody go out there, defend their country, and then at the time when a lot of them, especially in World War II and Korean War, are in advanced ages, when they need those exemptions, and say, sorry, boys, the war is over, now we're gonna take it away from you. And if that's personal, so be it. And I think that's rotten. And if you want equal assessment, that's fine, because that does not abolish those exemptions. They earned those exemptions. Any more questions? Sam?
Uh, George, one thing that, uh-
John, I'm sorry, I called Sam, I'll get your answer.
Okay.
Yeah, Sam.
The, uh, big concern I have in mind is our sales tax. We realize that's better than a third of our budget. And, uh, I've been trying to find out, and I haven't been able to, but, uh, I'm just wondering what, uh, what the city did with the deal we made with that strip mall that's going into town, going. Do we give them, uh, sewer and water, and what kind of, uh, what are we getting in return? I mean, is it gonna offset the money that we're gonna lose in this town in sales to, to that strip mall?
Let me, let me explain this, Sam. Last year, the council granted them, I think it's something like, uh, four thousand gallons a day, uh, on sewer, and I think the same in water. Nothing that we can do about it, or whatever that figure was. Now they want ten thousand. The council said, no way. They said, if you want ten thousand, we want to annex the property. And that's where it stands, and voluntarily have said no.
Excuse me, Your Honor. There's gonna be a lot of business lost in this town, and, uh, that means lots of sales tax, which is gonna put a burden on the property owners, plus the businesses also. I just hope we fight hard and come up with something out of this.
I agree, Sam. Yeah, John.
That, uh, that agreed, I guess was made back in nineteen eighty-seven or eighty-nine, wasn't it, Jim?
Yes. Oh, eighty-nine?
That, that, Sam, and if, if we had a county sales tax, I think everybody would share in that group.
Yes, but unfortunately, that was shot down. You're right, Jim. I wish they had too. Uh, John?
I just wanna say that, because the statistics of forty-seven percent are about as misleading as anything could be, because forty-seven percent of the tax base includes every piece of city property, state property, federal property, school property, all of the churches. Now, that's where the exemptions come in, that you're talking about, it's not veterans and senior citizens.
Oh, okay.
And they, they give you statistics, and they prove one thing, and that is that you don't know what the hell is in the statistics. But every bit of that is in assessed value of the city. And if you wanna assess the churches, and you wanna assess the city, and you wanna assess the post office and everything else, that's a whole different ballgame.
John used to be chief assessor of the city. Many years, he knows what he's talking about. I doubt you'd get very far assessing the state and the federal government. And the churches, I, I shudder at the thought. Anybody else? And, or else?
You've been talking about, uh, a controller, and why can't we have one? What do we have to do? What do we have, what's the, uh, we have to implement them, or we have to vote them, or what do we have to do?
You have to have one.
That's what I have to do.
That's why I want to consolidate departments, that'll free up some money.
Yeah, but it's, it's even borrowing money if you're gonna make money, that's the only time it's good to borrow money, is if you know you're gonna make money. And if a guy can save us a lot of money, borrow money.
Talk to the council. I can't do it.
For borrowing money, but I mean, if, if a controller is what we need so that each department will be run, I mean, all departments will be run under one head, so that we'll know what we're doing, 'cause all these, uh, department heads giving figures and everything, I'd like to be able to run something like that.
So would I. So would I. So would General Motors. Yeah, I agree. Anyone else? Mike?
You're gonna close from North Bay, I see you're taking away the thousand-
Take away what?
You're taking away the thousand dollars from North Bay. Does that mean you're holding it?
Not necessarily. I'll let John answer that.
What we're doing is meeting with a, with a committee, uh, to reopen North Bay. We, we advertised for some outside person or concern to come in and, and lease North Bay from us. And as of right now, we, we have got no response. So, uh, if we don't get any response very shortly, we're gonna sit down and look at opening it ourselves.
John, if I could, uh, we met with the Recreation Committee, Commission over there last night, and they're going to present a plan to the council of how they feel that they can rejuvenate revenues or whatever, to show that they can pay for itself. And yes, if they can, we certainly, we want to open it, Mike, if it's any way feasible at all.
Because if you're not gonna do it, anybody's gonna let the county run. You'll do better if you have a lead, then.
Well, if you can get a county to run it.
Yeah, I don't think it's gonna have a lot of money up there. They're not serious, they're not that way.
Tell them to get in touch with us. I think counties have their own problems, Mike, but we certainly have. I, I think the council would welcome any proposal from the county.
I think it's great, that's how long we did there, all the time.
Linda?
Because if you look down the budget, North Bay's been making money for years, so why would you, as a business, run a business that is not profitable? And I know it's great for rec, I mean, it's wonderful for our community, I absolutely agree.
How many people do you think use that bolt launch over there?
I know there's several, I know there's-
There's a lot of people who use that, it's a lot of fish.
But the bolt launch was open.
I'm still saying, as a taxpayer, when I look at things that are not productive, then how do you keep running a business that's not making money? It doesn't make sense to me.
You're making money in sales tax, isn't it?
I don't think so, no, not at all.
My chef wouldn't run a deficit for years, and that isn't even counting the services the city provided. Mike?
...for a few years, and he claimed that the last two years that he operated it, that they made, ended up and made money.
And maybe what he claimed, but that isn't what the budget said.
And that was, two years after he left the place, that it went back down.
I think that the problem has been, and Linda's right, we have not made money on that, and that's, that's why we closed it last year. There's no, there's no reason pouring money down a hole someplace if it's not, if it's not making money for you. I think we have to take a hard look at that and look at increasing our fees, uh, if we're gonna run a store there, it has to be done, run properly. People cannot go down there and camp for free, which I think we got a lot of that. Uh, I don't think the city has run it like a business, I think they need to, uh, and I think it can make some money. It, it's a nice area down there, but we have to pay attention to it and increase our fees and, and generate good clientele down there, because in talking to Jimmy Marbido of, uh, the Marbido Stores on, on Broadway, he says that that generates some sales tax money for him, some, some business into his store. People come out of the campground and come and buy milk, or bread, or whatever at his store. So, it, it does provide something for the community, but we just can't lose, lose money on it.
Yeah, if I could to add to that a little bit, saying that that generated some sales tax for proprietors on the west side, uh, we might look at this in respect of a tourism aspect, and it is an asset to tourists. So maybe the, uh, the chamber or the tourism committee might look at that and see if they can do anything with it, and incorporate that in their plans, and try to help with running that.
Uh, this is how the bowl ramp was open last summer, Mike. Yeah, Ross?
The whole story is, when, uh, when, uh, Erwin Davis, when Mario paid Erwin Davis and those ten, uh, seven merchants, and came down and told us what was wrong with the city, that's the story. You gotta get good management and better judgment.
Anyone else? Any other comments? Public area, all right. Yeah.
I was in touch with a couple of aldermen a couple of months back, Mr. Hollstead, uh, Mr. Rice, Mr. Murray, briefly, and Mr. Lincoln. I made a request of Mr. Lincoln to get some figures on, and outside contractors being hired by the city, plumbers, electricians, heating men. Did you act on that, John?
Uh, I haven't received the information from Jim Labota yet. I'd sent him the letter, and I sent you a copy of it, but I haven't received the information yet.
Well, my idea is, like this gentleman was saying here, I think a lot of it is accountability and waste. Rather than raise taxes and cut out, uh, employment and payroll and everything else, let's get into the waste. Now, when someone mentioned posted stamps, we may think that's a joke, but we're not naive enough to think that someone isn't taking stamps home, the mail Christmas cards. Who's accountable to the stamps? It's only a twenty-nine cent stamp. But who's accountable to the plumber, electrician, contractor, heating man, who is turning in invoices to the city, supposedly working six hours, getting paid for six hours, and maybe only working two? Who's accountable to the, uh, hours and invoices? Someone directing-
Department heads.
This is accountable right now.
Another question. We're quick to jump on the Pentagon, because they pay four hundred dollars for toilets. We are paying a dollar and two dollars for ten cent old rings.
Ten cent, what?
We're buying them locally. We can have, we can have people come into our city hall, or to our department heads, direct the manufacturer, and cut out about fifty percent of the muckup on material that is being purchased locally. Who's checking that out? And I'll tell you, you're naive enough to believe that no one has taken home a roll of two hundred and fifty feet of twelve-toothed ground wire. And when a mechanic puts in for two dozen spark plugs, when he already bought two dozen spark plugs a month before, where did those spark plugs go? And red. It's here. Kickback. It's here. When you have six plumbers install Naosmith water heaters for three hundred and twenty dollars a piece, the same identical water heater, and you hire another man to install one for four hundred dollars, where did the eighty dollars go?
No purchasing agent. That's the problem.
We need an agent, we need a controller, we need some kind of a maintenance department head, somebody that's gonna say, "Wait a minute."
It's a Mickey Mouse operation, frankly, okay? That's really what it is. And it's been that way since nineteen oh eight, because that's the way it was set up in the original charter.
So that's until two thousand eight. Somebody has to be accountable to this stuff. And waste, if we can eliminate some of the waste, we don't have to get rid of a fireman, or a policeman, or a DPW worker. And I think we better get someone in there and say, "Where is the money going?"
We don't have a controller, yeah, we don't have a controller, we don't have a purchasing agent, we don't have a personnel department. You have departments where the department heads do the hiring, not me, not the council. That's the problem. Yeah?
I can't see a department head be accountable if he's responsible. I mean, if you've got that department head who's responsible for giving orders, then he should be accountable.
Wants to know why the department heads can't be accountable. Well, as I pointed out, you know, they, they're probably doing the best they can on a, with, what their lights are. They're not CPAs, they're not accountants, they're not, uh, uh, I'm sure, uh, graduates from business schools, uh, they are doing, they, they got a job, and they're doing the best they can, I assume. Mike?
I tell you what, if I have to fix my car, I'm not gonna take it to Palmer Chevrolet and have them fix it, I'm damn sure. I'm gonna take it over to Leota Camp Leete and get it for half price. Now, why are we taking off our city police vehicles up to, uh, Palmer's or Park Cave at forty dollars a hopper and an hour?
Maybe the chief can answer that.
I can tell you why we are going, most of our cars are going to Park Cave rather than the other places, because they agreed to give us the best rate per hour on labor.
You say cheaper, we can't.
You couldn't get it cheaper, say, from an independent mechanic?
I'm saying independent mechanics at times could not fix them when we need them fixed.
Sometimes we send them up there two or three days, I mean-
They're gonna wait for parts, yes, they are.
I guess is what I'm getting at, when they have to sit, if they have to wait for parts, they have to sit over Camp Leete, it's just as well as they would at Park Cave, correct?
When, when we, when the cars are new and under warranty, that's it, they're going back to the dealer.
I agree.
Once the warranty is over, then we send most of them to Park Cave, because they have given us the best rate on labor per hour.
Linda, do you have a question? Anybody else? Sam?
I think it was three or four years ago, we did a study here in this community of former mayors in regards to restructuring our city. And, uh, there were a lot of good things brought out at that time, for some reason, the council voted it down, and in that structure was a controller, uh, and all the top people we need to run the city efficiently. Maybe it'd be a wise idea to resurface this again, and maybe something will come of it this time, because we're, uh, we're working on the old stagecoach times in this community. I think we should bring that up again. We've got all the information on record, and maybe, well, Johnny Johnson, the one who's one of the, the, uh, men that they, uh, talked with, right, John? How long ago was that, John? Three or four years ago?
What was that?
When we, uh, when the city here talked about restructuring our, our, uh, way of doing business, with a controller, city manager-
Hell, yeah.
Remember when that was brought up?
Yeah.
A lot of positive things brought out then, but for some reason, it just shot down.
Well, it was against the same manager that year.
Well, I think we should, uh, look into that again, get us going in the twenty-first century, that was all I got from the county.
Sounds like a good idea to me.
I was here when, when that committee was formed, and that came at the same time we were losing the federal revenue sharing, the state aid, the liability and medical insurance costs were going up, and we were having, you know, thirty and forty percent increases, and we didn't feel that that was the time to start adding more people. If things are leveling off, and we can stay with at least single-digit increases, maybe we can afford to have a controller or purchasing agent, which I was trying to do five years ago. Because when I go to some business to do work, whether it's Miller's or Nestle's or whatever, those are the people I deal with. They call me and get a price, and they call, call a couple other people to get prices, and that's what I, what a purchasing agent for the city should be doing.
That's right. Yeah, you're right, those were hard times. Linda?
I mean, yeah, we have hard times, but we're still thinking ten minutes ahead instead of ten years ahead, so nothing ever changes. And I think it's time something did change.
Alice?
I was here when they had that, that they're talking about, from the four mayors, and at the time, I was against it, because, for the reasons that Jimmy said. Also, um, we didn't know about all this other stuff that's come open tonight. Now, I come to meetings, as you know, all the time, and wasn't aware of all the stuff that goes on when you don't have. I thought that the mayor and the council were, were the ones who were ahead of all expenses and departments. Come to find out, each department is its own boss. Well, had we known that, I think we'd have talked it up more back then, when they were trying to pass that, uh, with the four former mayors, Johnson and Dunlop and, uh, Drone and Percy, and another one, I forgot, oh, Woodward. And it was a very good piece of work. Those guys worked, but probably three, four months, six months, a long time, and it was what, just what we do now. But I was against it then, because I wasn't aware of what we're in. So maybe half of the time, things don't pass because people don't know what's, you don't, we don't know what's going on until we're told.
What you don't realize, and I forgot to mention, is all the control we have over department heads, I don't have the right to hire and fire department heads. They can only be removed for cause, and they serve, uh, under good, what we call good behavior on most department heads, which means it's practically the equivalent of civil service. And the only way you can remove one is for very serious, uh, offenses, almost as bad as committing a crime. In fact, one was removed for committing a crime, and it was an awful job even getting rid of him. And, you know, most cities, that isn't true. Department heads serve at the pleasure of the mayor and/or the county and council, and that, of course, gives you some leverage to enforce reforms or, uh, savings, whatever is, is necessary. In this case, we're practically helpless, particularly the mayor. Uh, heck, Alice, you have about as much control over the expenses as I have in, in this city, and that's part of the sad part about this city. Yeah, Ross?
I want to apologize to Mario, she isn't here, and I want to apologize to you, George, because when I read the power to the mayor, you're darn right, you've got nothing.
Yeah, takes up about a half a page of the chart. Anybody else? Yes, hon?
Um, related to the medical benefits, I think Mr. Cook was talking about that, and all they were adjusting the deductibles and the cats and everything else. Now, in your negotiations, are you, um, are the employees contributing to their benefits? Are you negotiating yet to increase that, or are they contributing at all?
I think just the firemen are the only, only unit that's contributing.
Uh-huh, um-
We, we opted to increase deductibles rather than have them contribute. The same effect. We're, we're reducing expenses, that's, is there any difference if we reduce expenses or increase revenues?
Because there is very few places today that employ that, so the employees don't pay, and pay, that's causing a lot of the, um, their deficits and everything.
When we met with our, our insurance agent, uh, the fellow who administers our program, he told us we should either ask for a deductible, or increase deductible, or, uh, ask for a copay. So we opted to increase the deductible. It has the same effect on your balance sheet.
Also, what that does is to put the burden on the people who are using it. If you go to a doctor or whatever, they're the ones that have to pay more, they use the drug card, or they use whatever program, whereas with the copay, somebody may, if they're lucky, never have to use it, but they're still having to pay for it to make up for everybody else. So like John said, it's, the outcome is gonna be the same, but at least it's gonna put the burden where it belongs.
Al?
Uh, John, I want to apologize, I wasn't criticizing you or scolding you. I want to thank you publicly, because you were the only alderman that responded to me so quickly, by way of letter and making requests, even though they didn't get back to you. So I want to thank you publicly.
Of course.
Anyone else? Diana?
Comment about tourism, I don't know if that has anything to do with it now, but we have so many natural, like Lake Neowana. I've been to Texas and different places where my kids live, and they have a small, they have a small lake. They circle it, you have a lot of walkers, you got people walk the bridges all the time because they love to walk, have to go through the traffic and everything, paths around the lake where they could walk on it, ride bicycles, kids using their, um, skateboard, or they call them. Even, I know you can't go all around that lake, but it seems though most of it could be used more to-
As part of the plan.
But it's not a lot of money.
As part of the plan, and the plan of Lake Neowana, that he has.
And now Nestle's offering tours like they used to offer.
They have a problem with tours. Nestle's and Miller, I understand, uh, are not really geared for it, and it doesn't adhere with their manufacturing process. But it's something that, uh, if it can be worked out, the, uh, Chamber Council on Tourism has, has got that in mind too. But that is something that the, uh, proposal for, uh, Lake Neowana Park, uh, they do have in mind, are walking trails and, and perhaps, uh, more than that. They're doing, they're doing, they're doing a great job, you know? They really are. Anybody else? Anna?
What do you go about changing the city charter?
By local law.
Local law?
Yeah. Council can change it by local law anytime they want. Anyone else?
You know, I, I think there's some, some things that we're, that we're hearing here tonight, uh, we put together a budget that maintains what we have. Uh, you know, I've asked the mayor, and I, I think he's done it, is, is to put together a forward planning committee, so that we don't just look one year out. Some things that, that we can go over, some of the things that have been mentioned in mayor's letters previously. Um, if we can maintain where we are, uh, and build upon that, I think we would be better off, uh, as a city, because I'm hearing that people want us to go forward and, and make some changes. And I think that, we all think that some of them are warranted. I think maybe in the past, people were, uh, a little bit skeptical about, about making changes and, uh, hiring a, a city manager because it was gonna cost money. But if we can maintain what we have and, uh, do these kind of things, I think we'll be better off in the, in the long run for it.
Yeah, John's right. He is the one, in fact, who suggested the forward planning committee, and that committee has been appointed. He's the chairman, and I, I want to commend him for coming up with a suggestion. It's an excellent one. Uh, I don't think the council would oppose the changes. I think a lot of it, this has been a, a kind of a strange year, with a lot of controversy at times, and it has been difficult. And of course, uh, all of us, except, uh, Jimmy Myers and John Lincoln are new, so that means you've got a, a learning process. Hopefully, this coming year, we'll see more progress. Anyone else? Motion to close the public hearing. I'll move it.
Second.
All in favor, indicate by aye.
Aye.
Posed by no. Carried. Next item.
Resolution adopting the budget for the fiscal year commence in January one nineteen ninety-three, making appropriations for conduct of city government, establishing the rates of compensation for officers and employees subject to negotiations, as noted on the salary schedule. Whereas the governing body has met and considered the tentative budget and has conducted a public hearing thereon, as required by the city charter. Now therefore be it resolved that the tentative budget is amended and revised and herein after set forth, is hereby adopted, and that several amounts of, for objects and purposes specified in salaries and wages, subject to negotiation and Schedule Two of the budget, shall be and hereby are fixed at the amount shown therein effective January one nineteen ninety-three.
I'll move it.
Second.
Roll call, vote, please.
First ward? Yes. Second ward?
Yes.
Third ward? Yes. Fourth ward? Yes. Fifth ward?
I just, before I, uh, give my vote, I would just like to say that through the comments of the people that were here, some of the things that we've thought about before is of changes, uh, possibly changing the charter, getting the city, uh, somebody that can control our expenses and revenues, so that we've got a real tight handle on this thing, knowing that we are going to work in that direction, I'm sure, I go yes.
Sixth ward?
Yes.
Motion to carry, Your Honor.
Thank you. Next item.
Whereas at the common council of the city of Fulton has heretofore adopted the city of Fulton budget for fiscal year nineteen ninety-three, and has heretofore adopted a resolution making appropriations for fiscal year nineteen ninety-three. Whereas the amount of taxes to be levied in city of Fulton for city government purposes for nineteen ninety-three has been established, in the amount of four million thirty-three dollars and seventy-three da, four million thirty-three thousand seventy-three dollars. Now therefore be it resolved for city government purposes for the year nineteen ninety-three being the same hereby as directed to be levied, and raised by general tax on all taxable properties according to the valuation and the assessment rule for the current year in accordance with Section two fifty-five of the city charter of city Fulton.
I'll move it. I'll second it. All in favor, indicate by aye.
Aye.
Posed by no. Carried. Sixth, please. Yeah. All right, the next item we have before us is a quotes that are in front of the council for liability insurance. Uh, anyone in the council have any comment on that? Uh, are these the quotes you opened up last week?
That's correct.
Okay. And the lowest one was?
Streeter and Van Sanford, but then they didn't meet the specification.
The lowest one according to the, to what the clerk asked for?
Was Lad.
Was Lad.
That, out of North Syracuse.
Yeah, I have, I have a comment on that.
All right.
I think that in the-
I think that in the, uh, in the coming year, that the insurance committee should take a, a close look at exactly what we're insured for. You know, some of the proposals that came out of the Streeter and Van Sanford quote, I think we should look very closely at and maybe ask some of the other insurance companies to bid, uh, in a similar way. Some of the things I read, read there or heard about, I thought were valid, and maybe we need to, to look at them a little closer.
Yeah, I think you're right. I think that, uh, maybe the insurance committee ought to interview some of these agents and make comparisons. I guess the problem now is that we had the quotes and solicited them, and this is before the coun- the council now.
Yeah, but quotes, quotes are different from bids though. I mean, we would have to accept the lowest bid, but wouldn't we have to normally accept the lowest quote?
Is that what it was, Joe?
Yeah, we, we solicited quotes. We didn't go out and get bids.
Oh, then we're not bound by it.
Right. We aren't.
Have we, when does our coverage expire?
At the end of the year. And if we, and if we could, if we can save money, okay, I think we ought to do it now.
All right, what about the insurance committee meeting this week with some of these men?
Right.
And I'll call a special meeting.
And we can have a, you know, they can resubmit bids. I would, uh, pass the resolution tonight to, uh, uh, not accept any of the quotes that were given and to set up a meeting, uh, with the appropriate people so that maybe we can look, see, and, uh, look at our insurance and maybe save some money.
Would you agree with me?
Would the city clerk do that, set up a meeting with that?
Yeah, but, um, I agree with John that this should be given to the insurance committee of the council to, to do in the future. Uh, fortunately, this year, when it was brought up, when it was, when the mayor was approached, we had no idea that anybody wanted to bid our insurance. We had been with the Googles for sixteen years. And so the mayor rightfully saw, once somebody approaches you and says that they can save money, did ask me to send out for quotes to anybody that wanted to quote, four agents quoted. However, um, the only problem I have with John's proposal is it was entrusted to me to make sure that this was done on an apples-to-apples basis. All insurance agents were given a fair chance in, uh, several months of my time to make sure that this was done fair and equitably to all. And everyone knew what they were supposed to bid on. And it was on a zero deductible on the general liability insurance. And the lowest bid, in my opinion, did not meet the quote requirements as set forth by the mayor and myself. And now you're, you're telling, you're saying that the lowest responsible quoter, or whatever you want to call him, just because he didn't vote, he didn't quote...
The only thing that I'd say is, Joe, is a quote is different from a bid.
It doesn't make any difference. You still ask those four guys to bid on a quote as the mayor and I specified, and we said apples-to-apples, and that's what all four people did. And the lowest person meeting the quotation as a criteria by set by the mayor and myself was a land agency. Now what you're going to say is, you know, now we can save money, let's do it all over again. It, it, you can really get yourself into a problem when you do stuff like that because you already gave them all a fair opportunity to do this. That's just my opinion, your honor.
How are we bound legally?
I don't think we are.
Not bound legally.
I think you're bound morally.
Well, whatever. I think that, uh, Werner has raised a serious question about where the council could save money, and I don't think you can ignore it.
That, that's what I'm saying too.
And if the, uh, who's, who's chairman of the insurance committee?
It's not, it's not two thousand dollars that we could be saving, it's close to forty thousand.
All right.
That's a lot of money, to me.
Well, I think we better, you better have a fast meeting this week and a special meeting next week, or of the committee this week, and we can have a special meeting next week if necessary.
Well, uh...
And make sure that every carrier has an opportunity to, uh, be involved in the meeting. Otherwise it won't be worth it. All right?
I agree.
Okay. Do you, uh, somebody wanted to make a motion to table this?
I'll move it.
Second?
Second.
Roll call, vote please.
First ward?
Yes.
Second ward?
Yes.
Third ward?
Yes.
Fourth ward?
Yes.
Fifth ward?
Yes.
Sixth ward?
No, I agree with Joe. I think it's unfair.
Motion to carry, your honor.
Right. Seven, please.
Resolve that the Fulton Patriot be designated as official newspaper for the City of Fulton for the year nineteen ninety-three.
I'll move it.
Second.
All in favor, indicate by aye.
Aye.
Posed by no. Carried. Eight, please.
Resolve that the mayor be authorized in executing agreement with Fulton Historical Society nineteen ninety-three, providing the City of Fulton's contribution of thirty-five hundred dollars to help promote the City of Fulton's historical and cultural economy.
I'll move it.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor, indicate by aye.
Aye.
Posed by no. Carried. Nine, please.
Resolve that the mayor is authorized entering to a letter agreement with Topath Towers to maintain and plow their off-street parking area for the sum of five hundred dollars for nineteen ninety-three.
Motion?
I'll move it.
Second?
All in favor, indicate by aye.
Aye.
Posed by no. Carried. Ten, please.
Resolve that the mayor be authorized and directed to execute an agreement between EM Electric for electrical repairs to the generator and municipal building and all wiring directly related to, from the generator to the municipal building, establishing a fee of twenty-five dollars per hour plus parts, effective January one nineteen ninety-three.
Is this, uh, can I ask a question, Joe?
Sure.
Is this a standing agreement? Is this a standing agreement or a maintenance contract with EM Electric?
Yeah, he maintain, if there's anything going wrong electrically in here, he comes in and compares it.
Was this put out for a bid for competitive, uh, quotes?
No, it was all, always done by Charlie Pierce for years, long before I got here, and then Charlie got sick, and then, um...
Something I think you ought to look at.
Stay in line.
You ought to look at this.
How much is the agreement? What is the contract cost?
Yeah, it's twenty-five dollars per hour.
What's it normally run a year, you know?
Uh, I can't tell you off the top of my head, John. He just comes in here whenever we have any electrical problems. He's on a, you know, he comes, seems to come, uh, whenever he's called on a regular basis. Like, hey, if you want somebody else to do it, it's fine with me.
Well, it's not the case I want somebody else to do it, I'm just wondering if we put up a bid, if we could get a guy maybe for twenty dollars, and ours is twenty-five.
Well, I wonder if you shouldn't put up for bids anyway.
I think probably any money that we spend is going to exceed two hundred and fifty dollars at any time if you go out to bid, no matter who does it.
Yeah.
Are we going to draw a expectation now?
Three. Hour levations could generate unknown amounts of, uh, expense.
Bits.
Well, no, can't you just, uh, bid for, uh, so much per hour for electrical work? Why don't we just get three, three bids?
You can put out a quote for so much an hour not to exceed X amount of dollars, and you're all set.
Yeah, no, I understand. I just ask electricians. It's fine with me.
Okay. So we'll just hold that?
Yep.
This is open for an expression?
Sure.
Yeah?
Twenty-five dollars, that sounds unreasonable, that sounds fair.
Well, I would say, you know, the problem is, you have to give others a chance to bid.
That's one thing. And the other is accountability again. Who checks the bills and invoices, do you?
Yes.
You know, it comes to you.
Mm-hmm.
You know how long these men are on the job working?
Uh, I usually know when they come to me and start the problem, they report to me when they're done. I always get them to report, so I know how long they're on the job.
There should be a foreman or someone, or a department head in that area. Now, the guy can lower his rate to twenty dollars an hour and just up your bill six more hours.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, it would be impossible for me to...
Start it at that old time, mark it up ten percent, then give you a ten percent discount.
It, it's, it would be impossible for me to monitor where he is and how long he's...
Has to be responsible. The second bid is great, twenty-five isn't bad, but accountability of the hours on the invoice, yeah, let's start watching. Thank you.
My problem is not with the twenty-five dollars an hour either. My problem is that everybody should be, uh, given the same opportunity to do services for the city.
All right, we'll hold it for, uh, quotes or bids, whatever. Eleven?
Resolve that the mayor be authorized entering into agreement, letter agreement with City of Swiggle for disposition of animals, euthanization, cremation, et cetera, commencing January one and expire in December thirty-first nineteen ninety-three.
I'll move it.
All in favor, indicate by aye.
Aye.
Posed by no. Carried. Twelve, please.
Resolve the following bills are hereby approved for payment. Swiggle County Solid Waste, ten thousand three hundred and fifty-two dollars for tip and fees. Certified Environmental Services, Syracuse, New York, fifteen hundred and seventy-five dollars for fifteen annual VOC samples. Certified Environmental Services, again, twenty-seven hundred and thirty dollars for thirteen annual inorganic samples. Cargill Sop, thirteen hundred eleven dollars thirty-three cents for road sop. Swiggle County Highway Department, five thousand six hundred forty-seven dollars fifty cents for solid waste hauling. Swiggle County DPW, five thousand three hundred and twenty dollars and fifty cents for sludge hauling. Cargill Sop, two thousand two hundred and eighty-one dollars and three cents for road sop. Newman Traffic Signs, twelve hundred and thirty-five dollars and forty-five cents for signs. Aqua, five thousand seven hundred and twenty-eight dollars and sixty-four cents for water. Jones Chemicals, eleven hundred dollars for chlorine. Jones Chemicals, again, twenty-nine hundred sixteen dollars forty-two cents for ferrochloride. Newman Traffic Signs, ten hundred seventy-seven dollars and eighty-three cents for signs. Above items are budgeted but over a thousand dollar limit and requires the council's approval.
I'll move it.
Second? All in favor, indicate by aye.
Aye.
Posed by no. Carried. Thirteen, please.
Okay. Hello, I don't know.
Ah, they're killing it.
Resolve that the city clerk be authorized and directed to advertise for a public auction to be held the first meeting in January nineteen ninety-three, seven thirty P.M., for the purpose of selling any right, title, or interest to the property located at three twenty-one dash three twenty-three Seneca Street. Be it further resolved that the condition of the sale requires a minimum bid of thousand dollars with a one hundred percent cash payment in full at said time of auction by the successful bidder with a bidding increments of fifty dollars. Be it further resolved that this council reserves the right to reject any and all bids if they feel that they are not in the best interest of the City of Fulton.
I'll move it.
I've got a question about this.
Right.
Is this, what is this property?
It's a vacant, uh, piece of land. It's on the corner of, uh, Seneca and Ford.
Do we own it?
Yes.
Is that something where Carol could go in and put up a structure for us?
If she wants to bid on it, she can.
Okay, but we do...
It's going to public auction. It, this came up for bid several years ago in the ward, and nobody, uh, put in a bid on it. And now I've been asked by someone to put it back on because they'd like to make an offer to purchase, uh, because there are other, there are two other vacant homes there, and they would like to develop the block.
Okay. I, I guess my only thought was, is this something that if we own it, we can, we can have her put a structure on it and, like we discussed before, is that...
We just can't hand it over to, uh, an agency. It has to go for public auction.
It's not a block, ew. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten. There's Anita, area, Seneca, and then there's Anita, Seneca, area. Then that's the corner where the... This, isn't this on Seneca and Ford? That's where the new, uh, B parts were indicated.
No, that's here. So, sort of, here.
No? Oh. And it's, it's the corner that's vacant, which part? The corner of Ford and Seneca is vacant. There was a structure taken down there a year ago, a year and a half ago. I know, it would be the southwest corner. Right, be right next to, uh, Bird's. No. I'm a block from there. Why can't I picture it?
Okay, I was moving it. Okay, I, I moved it. John, another thing is that will be one less piece of property that we have to maintain.
Okay, I'm just asking a question, I'm not against it.
I'll second.
All in favor, indicate by aye.
Aye.
Posed by no. Carried. Fourteen.
Resolve that Chapter one sixty-five subsection one sixty-five sixty-six of the vehicle and traffic ordinance City of Fulton title Handicap Parking be amended to read as follows. Handicap parking spot to be established in the Fulton War Memorial Parking Lot adjacent to the handicap parking ramp in front of the main entrance to the Fulton War Memorial.
I'll move it.
Second?
Second.
Don't ask me. Did we get a second?
Yes.
All in favor, indicate by aye.
Aye.
Posed by no. Carried. Fifteen, please.
Resolve that the mayor is hereby authorized to sign a quitclaim deed between the City of Fulton and Muriel P. Sherman for her property located at three oh two West Broadway. Ask for attach, subject to approval of the city attorney.
I'll move it.
Second? All in favor, indicate by aye.
Aye.
Posed by no. Carried. Sixteen.
For the meeting the council held on July twenty-first, the resolution was passed allowing vendors to vendor wares in the area known as Bullhead Point, subject to the vendors obtaining a license from the city clerk's office and approval of council. Where Sharon Martin has applied for a vendor's license to sell hot dogs, hamburgers, soda, et cetera, from February one nineteen ninety-three through January thirty-first ninety-four, Bullhead Point. She resolve, the council hereby approves the application for a vendor's license by Sharon Martin and directs the city clerk to issue license in accordance with the requirements specified at the Fulton City Quote.
I'll move it.
I'll second it.
All in favor, indicate by aye.
Aye.
Posed by no. Carried. Seven, wait a minute. Ann?
Can you tell us how much, uh, sales tax revenue is derived from the Bullhead Point?
I talked, I talked to Jimmy LaBota about sales tax. Yeah. On Bullhead Point, and what he's told me is that, um, it's extremely difficult to city detract what sales tax does to me from Bullhead Point, that the, um, reports that we have to request from the state are outdated by the time they come, and it's very hard to create and, you know, piece to pour over in order to find that out, so that, um, he's not confident that he has any kind of answer on that at all. Good point.
I didn't give the answer. That was not a public question.
How much sales tax money of vendor case?
Yes. Several months ago, you wrote up a letter and asked the chamber to look into the issue of, uh, vendor fees at Bullhead Point. You spent an enormous amount of time researching the issue and, um, researching how it's handled in other communities and providing you with a recommendation. Um, I know that there were some legal issues that were raised about whether the city should be collecting fees at Bullhead Point at all. Could you comment on that?
Well, sorry.
Where does the fee structure stand?
Christ, I thought we were going to raise it to fifteen hundred.
I don't remember. I know we raised it.
I know we raised it. I can't remember the exact amount we raised it.
I think you might wanna table it and think about your fees because I remember a recommendation of some fifteen hundred dollars is a recommended vendor fee.
Yeah, I frankly thought we had raised it to fifteen hundred. Uh, I think it's something that ought to be studied. Definitely. I mean, I think these vendors are serious competition with the merchants in our community who are paying sales tax.
As part of the original resolution permitting people to be vendors at Bullhead Point, don't we also have the right to rescind it?
Sure.
Let me just leave this for now until we decide what we're gonna do.
Okay, what committee would that come under?
I think it should come under Finance.
Finance? Who's the chairman?
Chairman.
Okay. Let's put on the next agenda for discussion. Is that all right with the council?
I prefer to table this off.
All right. Motion?
Well, it's already been voted on. It'd have to be sent.
What happened? Did we vote on it?
Yeah, we voted.
Okay. Motion to rescind?
I'll move it.
I'll second.
All in favor, indicate by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed by no?
No.
Wait a minute. I mean, nobody's gonna sell down there for another few months, I don't think.
That's right.
I need a roll call vote.
Roll call vote, please.
First ward?
No.
Second ward?
No.
Third ward?
Yes.
Fourth ward?
Yes.
Fifth ward?
Yes.
Sixth ward?
Yeah.
Motion's carried, Your Honor.
Motion to rescind is carried. Motion to table?
So move.
Second.
Um, our roll call vote.
Um, first ward?
No.
Second ward?
No.
Third ward?
Yes.
Fourth ward?
Yes.
Fifth ward?
Yes.
Sixth ward?
Yeah.
Motion's to tables, carried, Your Honor.
Thank you. Uh, John, will you look into that, please? Yes.
We have questions.
Yes.
Fees over at Bullhead Point. Maybe the city clerk could explain to the public here how much better, the veteran's license, how much would the city collect from that?
On what?
A person, honorably discharged member of the armed force of the United States, had a veteran's license. You have honored that, am I correct?
It's correct. There's no fee.
No, it's no fee?
No.
But you restricted, but you restrict a veteran from that area because I got a veteran's license.
Okay. He's something else we can look into. Eighteen, please. Oh, I'm sorry. No, uh-
Seventeen.
Seventeen.
Resolved that appointment by Mayor Vlad of David Ritchie, one ten Voorhees Street, Fulton, New York, to the Fulton Library Board to replace Pauline Rasbeck, effective December thirty-first nineteen ninety-two and to expire twelve thirty-one ninety-seven is hereby approved.
I'll move it.
Second.
All in favor, indicate by aye.
Aye.
Opposed by no?
No. No.
Roll call vote, please.
First ward?
Yes.
Second ward?
Yes.
Third ward?
No.
Fourth ward?
No.
Fifth ward?
Yes.
Sixth ward?
Yes.
Motion's carried, Your Honor.
Okay. Eighteen, please.
Resolved that the official policy on a drug-free workplace, copy which is attached, is hereby adopted for employees of the City of Fulton. Be further resolved that each employee is required to read said policy and accompanying literature and acknowledge receipt of same and agree to abide by it in all respects as a condition of continual employment.
Any comment?
I've only got a question about this, Your Honor. Now, this drug-free workplace policy, is there a provision in there that a employee could be drug tested at any time?
No, I think the policy only requires the reading, doesn't it, Joe?
Yeah, they have to, they have to read it and they have to sign that they've read it and then the employer has the option, if someone violates it, to either rehabilitate that person or to terminate him.
Again, I think it might be advisable for the city to look into the possibility of drug testing for any city employee. In the long term, I don't know if it'd be immediate or not, but in the long term, it would possibly lower our insurance rates begin for incorporating that if we're going to demand a drug-free workplace.
Who's chairman of ordinances? Can you check it out, Jim? And maybe, I don't know what the legal ramifications of that are. You probably have to confer with Spencer on it. Motion?
I'll second it.
All in favor, indicate by aye.
Aye.
Opposed by no? Carrie. Nineteen, please.
Basically, last year and again for next year, the River Fest Committee, you know, wants it be a city sponsor, we want to, you know, the insurance policy of the city, so I asked Joe to prepare a resolution. He's got one, he likes to eat.
You know, I think it's something we ought to look into, John. As I understand, the River Fest Committee is going to incorporate, which is going to protect them from liability and it puts the total onus on us. And I'm wondering if we should assume that responsibility.
Uh, I have a resolution. I just like to throw it out there. Okay, what's your resolution?
Well, let me explain something. Part of the problem involving this, you know, we're liable, of course, for anything involving streets or equipment of ours or employees of ours who may be responsible for anybody being hurt or damaged. We have that responsibility anyway. If we go on as a sponsor, however, and assume liability, then we're liable for everybody who was employed by River Fest. We're responsible and liable for any negligence on the part of the person who puts on the fireworks display or vendors, so on. We act as the insurers for these other parties and I think that's an extension of liability a city doesn't need. And you're talking about fireworks, for example, you could have multiple injuries from fireworks that would exceed the policies both the city and the firework operator. And then we become self-insured. You're looking at some potential big liability.
I know we kinda hammered this out last year and, you know, we finally did pass the resolution and I just-
Well, I realize that's last year, John, but are you comfortable with that potential liability?
Well, you know, I had a resolution.
What is the purpose for us to do this? I mean, there's gonna be a River Fest, right?
Yeah, sure.
They just want us to be the sole sponsor or?
Well, they want us to assume the liability along with them. That's what it amounts to.
Lots of times, your entertainment, your top brand entertainment, as you well know, will not come to the city unless they're insured and you know that well with Memorial Day Weekend, John, because we have to ensure the entertainment on the city's policy comes down from Memorial Day Weekend.
Okay.
On the city's policy.
Well, why can't River Fest do that?
I don't know. I'm just-
Is that what, is that what they're asking for?
They're asking-
You're asking for co-insurers, is what?
Sure.
Right, they're basically asking us-
Sure.
Because that's what, like Miller Brewing Company does when they bring entertainment on Memorial Day.
Right. They're asking us, we do the same thing for Miller Brewing.
Is that, is that what this resolution is asking?
It's subject, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, and let's see, Mayor, your suggestion is that we wait, see if River Fest incorporates and becomes their own entity?
Sure.
Which they did discuss doing last year, incorporate.
Right.
Um, are they, are they talking about it, John? Are they going towards a decision that way?
We had a meeting the other day, but, you know, we didn't talk about corporation or anything. It was just, you know, entertainment.
Get crazy if they don't. Because now, now all the individuals on that committee are personally liable. Yes, in the House.
They said a few thousand dollars and it's gonna cost more in probable lawsuit. What's the sense of it?
Not sure I understand that, Alice.
Well, he wants you to sponsor, he wants the city to sponsor? Is that what I, I can't hear you, so I've gotta assume.
Yes, he wants us to sponsor River Fest and in effect, we're gonna be co-insurers.
Well, that's, what do we gain by that? Nothing.
Absolutely nothing, except more liability.
Well, I don't think it's-
Plus, you know, the risk that down the road, if you got a real serious accident, you could be looking at libra lawsuits that's gonna exceed the insurance coverage of both the city and the committee and the person who was involved. You know, you get a multiple accident from fireworks and you're looking at multimillion-dollar lawsuits.
And no River Fest, right?
No, it has nothing to do with no River Fest. It merely says that we're not the sponsor. They put it on anyway.
Joe, can't make the entertainment in?
Why can't they bring the entertainment in?
Just looking for, like John said about, no one's does with theirs.
No, River Fest can carry their own insurance.
Well, Memorial Day could do the same thing too, but we basically are asking for the same thing that we do for Memorial Day, Your Honor, and that's solid as far as we-
It's really a shame that everybody doesn't have some grounding in law and really realize what you're talking about or read the paper and see the multimillion-dollar verdicts that are handed down in cases that would be really amazing if you realize how fairly inconsequential the injuries are.
Your Honor, we could table this until we find out what their intent actually is.
Well, I'd like to vote on the resolution that I have tonight.
John, uh, whatever. All right. Yeah, yeah.
You know, we were just asking for the same thing that we asked for last year, although I'm doing it now.
He doesn't really have a reason. He's finally following the path of the past, as has happened so often in other matters, simply because it's done before, it should be done again. Exactly. Okay. Somebody, you wanna make the motion, John?
I'll move it.
Second?
Second.
Roll call vote.
First ward?
Yes.
Second ward?
Yes.
Third ward?
Yes.
Fourth ward?
Yes.
Fifth ward?
Yes.
Sixth ward?
Yes.
Motion's carried, Your Honor. Thank you.
Twenty.
Resolved the recreation superintendent is hereby authorized to purchase from the state bid list, one flail mower, a total cost of two thousand seven hundred and three dollars and seventy-five cents. Said cost to be direct charged, the A seventy-one ten point two parts of cone.
What's a flail mower, John?
That's something to cut brush.
Where do they-
I think.
Where do you cut brush? What was that, you?
We were there last night, Dave and I.
Yeah, it's the type of mower we use to cut high grass with, George. It's more than a regular lawnmower.
They're explaining.
It's a flail mower used to cut high grass, okay, and we get these lawns that are up most of the time. It's the same type that we've been using and the one that he has is on its last legs. He had it budgeted into this year's budget to buy one and he's got two weeks to get it passed in the budget while the money's still there and we need one, so that's why he's proposing the bid.
Oh, well, I didn't realize it was replacing an old one.
He's turning the old one in, right?
It's also off the state bid list, which is a lot cheaper that we could purchase anywhere else.
He did check around. He got a couple different quotes and still found that the state bid list is the cheapest. That's okay.
I'll move it. Second? All in favor, indicate by aye.
Aye.
Opposed by no? Carrie. Twenty-one, please.
Your Honor, do we wanna hold these till after executive session?
Oh, yeah, we have to, okay. Hold that. Twenty-two, please.
I'd be all three of them.
Oh, okay. Twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, will follow the executive session. To under discussion, first item. This is an offer by the school. They, thank you. They actually own Hewlett Park and they are offering to exchange title of Hewlett Park for property of equal value owned by the city adjacent to G Ray Body High School North Parking Lot on Gillard Drive. Uh, I assume that this probably is, we're talking about part of the property that's part of the park over there and I think really what we should do is, should be referred to the city attorney for, at least to get a survey from the Board of Education as to the property they want to exchange for, if the council is in accord. Because I don't really know how much they're talking about. Yeah, Mike?
I wish you would call the people that live down close by that school before you do anything like that. Whatever addition that they want to that school, take it out of the country. You want to try living down there if you want to live through hell. That's right. Try to get a cop to come down there and patrol that area. I think we brought out of there a darling mother, the mothers ought to listen to their darlings down there some day. Like, geez, there's always ten, fifteen, twenty, thirty kids out there from the minute the school buses get down there until they leave. And then you get, you get twenty school buses on just a street stop, they block the traffic down through there and they sit there with their motors running and you can't hardly breathe. But it's true. I-
And say, please stop these fires. Chief, are there complaints that haven't been responded to there? No chief. Okay.
You send a patrol car down there so, try to catch speeders, the patrol car parked in the school parking lot.
Well, if you get any more complaints, they don't respond nothing else.
A one-way street there, partial one-way street and they don't deserve that either.
I feel the same way. Personally, I wouldn't wanna give up any of the parkland.
Yeah, I think a lot of the people in that neighborhood would be dead set against, you know. I can check it out for you. I'll work on it here before we get together again, but-
You wanna work with Spencer on it?
Sure, I'll canvass that neighborhood, but I don't, I don't think anybody will.
Refer then to city attorney and Jim Rice?
George?
Yeah.
Wouldn't we be entitled to Hewlett Park anyway by means of adverse possession?
No. You can't obtain title of property by adverse possession against any municipality.
Oh, okay.
Besides, you can't dispose of park property without legislative consent anyway. Yeah, and besides, I wouldn't wanna let any of our park go, frankly. I wouldn't mind expanding it, but I would hate to reduce it. Yeah, like what, raise our taxes again? I mean, what does the council wanna do with it? Wanna table it for now?
Oh, yeah. Jim and I, please.
It's only a discussion item, so they can just address it, can't they?
Yeah, all right.
They need to table it.
We'll just hold it and Spencer and Jim can look into it. Uh, item two is the parking assessment on Valley News. Uh, the information I've got on that from, uh, I got it here somewhere. Carol Rulich is that there is, uh, an agreement. I forgot what they call it, some kind of a parking assessment downtown, not parking, but for plowing and it includes a certain portion of downtown and some of the parking lots, but it can only include the public parking lot so that Valley News parking lot as private one is not eligible for plowing so that they would either have to pay that assessment and only get their sidewalk plowed or withdraw from that group, as I understand it. Does anybody, the council know anything about it?
Yeah, earlier this year when I talked, I think I spoke with you about it and I went down to the Valley News office and they were assessed a fee for the service and they paid the fee but never received the service. And then the city said that they would give them the service, that they had a choice, an option. They could have maintained it themselves, not pay the fee, but if they paid the fee, we would give them the service. Not only the sidewalk, but also the- the service, not only the sidewalk, but also the, uh, parking lot. The city was maintaining it for them until someone fell and sued, and then they stopped maintaining it, even though the Valley News had been paying for the service.
Yeah, I understand they've been billed now for this year, is that right, Jim?
Yeah.
And, uh, they weren't plowed last, last winter?
No.
They were not on the parking assessment listing last year.
But why, why are they billed with, uh, the assessment plus interest? They're coming out? Oh, okay, fine.
Because this, this is, uh, almost gets to be a bit funny. Going back to when we got that property in nineteen eighty-four, then CDA Director Ellen Moll, Ellen Moll, uh, told us, and this is probably a casual conversation, that the sidewalk would be plowed, but we'd have to take care of the parking lot. Uh, that was done until we had this, somebody fell down, and there was a lawsuit, uh, and we've got some letters here, right around nineteen ninety-one, then the city attorney, Jared Gribito, discovered that, uh, a resolution that had been passed by the council exempting the Valley News from the urban renewal district responsibility was contrary to city charter. So, a, uh, resolution was passed rescinding that, and then the latest discussions that took place would be, we'd have to pay this, uh, I guess the limit is eleven thousand dollars, and each person shares in that, our assessment would have been something over four hundred dollars to get a little strip of sidewalk plowed. And then the latest information that we have in writing, it's a very unspecific letter, dated October nineteen ninety-two, and this is the result of, uh, our aldermen looking into it, and I guess yourself, this letter from you says it has been determined you are entitled to receive services from a member of the Canal Emergents Association, this shall include snow removal, and, and asking verbally what this meant, both of you assured us that it meant the parking lot as well. Now, we have here a case of, let, let's look at what's reasonable. Uh, certainly, I would be happy to retire the blazer that I drive in here at seven, seven thirty in the morning and not plow the parking lot. If I put on the hat of the taxpayer of the City of Fulton, I wouldn't want the city paying for a private lot to be plowed, that's not reasonable. Neither is it reasonable that as members of the urban renewal district, we don't get the sidewalk plowed. And all of this was going along just fine until somebody arbitrarily, whether it was in the DPW or where it was, I don't know, someone arbitrarily stopped it. I would also point out that we never were assessed, we would have been willing to pay a reasonable assessment, but we were never assessed for that sidewalk plowing, and then all of a sudden, the city wants to include us for several hundred dollars. The reasonable solution to this, however you need to choreograph it, is we continue to plow our parking lot, the city should find a way to plow the sidewalk. Now, maybe that means amending the local law that the urban renewal falls under, and we can be an, uh, like, an appendix to that or something, but we ought to be able to do that, and the fee should be reasonable, the fee should not be several hundred dollars. Obviously, if you measured square footage, it would cost us about twenty dollars a year, you can't do that either, but there ought to be something that can be done, and you people ought to be able to find a way to get that done. We've done whatever we've been asked to do, we never avoided a bill.
So, was it, just recently, Ron, you, you haven't received my letter yet, I received today a letter from Carol explaining that you are in that, uh, district, and that the assessment is almost four hundred dollars for plowing the sidewalk only, and she enclosed a copy of the, uh, law relating to it, and I sent you that. Uh, and unless that is changed, uh, either the charter's changed, I'm not sure what change has to be made, that's the best that the city can do at the present time, and you're gonna be paying almost four hundred bucks to have your sidewalk plowed, but I understand, too, that there is a bill, now, I thought this was a bill for last, uh, winter, and Jim, you're saying it's for this year, but I don't understand what you mean by this year, ninety-two, ninety-three, or ninety-one, ninety-two?
Fiscal year nineteen ninety-one, they were not included in the parking assessment listing, there was no bill sent to them. Uh, for the fiscal year nineteen ninety-two, in January, a bill was sent out to them for those two months that they had received.
Well, you mean fiscal, I, I, are we talking about fiscal year or the calendar year, I don't understand.
They're both the same, for nineteen ninety-two.
So, the calendar year would include a part of last winter?
No, it included just this year, nineteen ninety-two.
Then why, why would their bill include, uh, interest and penalties?
The bill was due in January.
So, it's due in January, but the work doesn't start until November, December?
Starts in January of nineteen ninety-two.
That's what I asked.
I have here a picture of your signature, Your Honor, special assessment, this is on part of the cars, sixteen dollars and seven cents.
Right.
Fee of forty, twenty dollars and nine cents, for that amount of money, we're being threatened with, uh, advertised for tax sale. We never, this is the first we saw of this, now, the larger one I have right here, he had four hundred and seventy-two dollars, it's the first we ever saw, we never received a thing, they aren't...
There, there was a, there was a, there was a bill sent out in January of this year, now, whether it had been received or not, I have no way of knowing.
I can tell you we never received a bill, this is the first thing we saw when we built it.
Let me try to figure out still, exactly when the plowing was supposed to be done, was it supposed to start January nineteen ninety-two?
Nineteen ninety-two, January nineteen ninety-two, is the first year that they were put back on the parking system.
And the plowing was supposed to start then?
That would have been when, sure.
They did not get plowed. That's the point.
Yes, I did.
It was plowed. Okay, got a bill, January nineteen ninety-two, a bill was sent, for plowing, sidewalk was plowed, now the question is, we didn't receive the bill, now we're being assessed interest, I guess, and penalties.
Excuse me, I, I don't want to miss the central part of the issue here, I've got here the list adding up to the eleven thousand dollars from nineteen ninety-one, give you an example, block restaurant that enjoys a city parking lot down there, three hundred and ninety-nine dollars and forty-three cents, I can go right down the line. We want to pay our fair share for a sidewalk to be plowed, it is not reasonable to pay more money than that for that sidewalk.
Oh, that is a volatile situation.
Yeah, I would like to ask you to find a way, administrator, you've got city attorney, someone can figure this out, the, uh, it is, um, well, I got the section two sixty-three of the city charter, and we're a special case, and we'd like some kind of fair treatment.
Okay. Uh, I'm gonna ask the city attorney to look into it, check with you, check with Jim Laboda, and, uh, we'll, we'll just hold this until, uh, we get a, uh, some advice from the city attorney on it. I agree with you, it's a very unfair assessment, comparatively speaking. If your parking lot was included, then it would make more sense. Okay, thank you for coming. Uh, anyone from the audience have anything they want to bring before the council, before we go into executive session? Dinah?
Patriotic, the pa, um, and everybody, the City of Fulton gets it for free, and I live a half a block from Wilbur Street, and they stop the paper right at Wilbur Street, and we never get a patriotic.
The patriot?
Mm-hmm.
Dinah? There's a lot of things the city is responsible for. The dinah needs one.
I said, "How come you don't go down there, she's for me," as if I were telling you she had to go off the boonies somewhere, and I said, "We, we live in the city."
I can tell you where your paper goes. I get one at my house, I get one at the front door of my office, I get one at the two side doors of my office, and one in the vacant apartment, uh, entrance at the back of my office, okay? I'll deliver it personally. Anybody else? Are we all done? As the auctioneer would say, are we all done? Are there any more bids? Whatever. Mike, I'm not gonna deliver your paper.
Your Honor?
Yes.
I have one more piece, suppose, George, do you have one?
Sure.
Joe has a resolution.
Okay.
Joe has a resolution.
I have another resolution.
Resolved that handicap parking be established on both sides of the street, in front of the Baptist, Baptist church on South Third Street to the corner. The other resolution is handicap parking on South Third Street at the chiropractic office, from the sidewalk in front of the chiropractic office to the corner.
Motion?
I'll move it, I'll second it.
All in favor, indicate by aye.
Aye.
Opposed by no? Carry it. Motion to adjourn to executive session.
So move, Your Honor.
Yeah.
Are we going to do a resolution to, uh, get rid of, uh, other stuff that Dobbie offer? We have to do it thirty days.
Well, it's, it's in the budget, I just sent him a letter.
I've, uh, I've spoken to them, and they've agreed that they, they're not gonna hold us to the thirty-day limit, I told them that, that I'd honor it, but I don't see a problem if I sent him a letter tomorrow.
Okay. Second?
I'll second it.
All in favor, indicate by aye.
Aye.
Opposed by no? Carry it.